Going to call the Board of Selectmen's meeting for October 24, '22 to order. I'm pleased to announce we didn't start tonight in executive session. Would you all please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. Anyone for public comment announcement before I turn to the Town Administrator for our six?
In the packet tonight, you'll see that the Veterans Day ceremony is in the packet. So Shawnee Carroll, our Veterans Agent, along with the Cemetery Department is working to have this be another successful event. It was very well attended last year, and I just want to remind everyone that it's an Island Pond Cemetery this year. There is an event that the Rec Department has rented out, Brooks Park, so there'll be people at 11 o'clock at that event. So I want to remind people that they really want to go to the Island Pond Cemetery for the event. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
And it's at November 11th at 11 o'clock. Thanks.
Thank you.
Speaking of veterans, Chris Joyce, Friends of the Harwich Council on Aging. We're going to host, along with the Veterans Agent Shawnee Carroll and the Harwich Fire Department, a grab-and-go lunch for Harwich veterans, up to 70 of them, on November 10th. That's a Thursday. They'll pick up their grab-and-go between 11:30 and 12:30, and I hope veterans listening to this tonight will call and leave a message in RSVP at 508-432-5050. Thank you.
Hello. Good evening, everyone. Patrick Otten, East Harwich. I just want to make a brief public announcement that the Mass Department of Agricultural Resources, that's known as MDR, is now accepting public comment on EverSource's vegetation management plan. EverSource is turning in their plan, their five-year plan and their one-year plan, and we -- public has input as to their opinion as to the EverSource's techniques, okay? So written public comment can be sent to Rights-Away Program, Massachusetts Department of Agricultural Resources, 251 Turnpike Road, Southborough, Mass., 01772. There's also a public zoo meeting, which will be held November 3rd, that you can also attend. I can give you those details. You can look it up on their website. Excuse me, let me go back to the written public comments. They're due by November 7th, Monday, at 5:00 p.m. So my comment simply is, there's other options that EverSource could execute with respect to their vegetation management program. One, the land is not EverSource's. EverSource only has a right-of-way, so why don't the landowners take care of their property? Okay? EverSource can also use less toxic pesticides and herbicides, and/or, as already been demonstrated in Harwich once already, local organizations such as garden clubs, school groups, nonprofits, et cetera, could take responsibility for vegetation management on the roads. That's the right-of-way areas underneath the power lines. So that's my announcement. I hope the public hears it and can respond and give MDR their input as to respect to EverSource's plans. Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick. Anyone else for public comment announcement?
Good evening. Michael Locke, Executive Director of the nonprofit Harwich Conservation Trust. I want to congratulate the Select Board and the Town on being approved by the state of Massachusetts for the local acquisitions for natural diversity grant of $400,000, which helps reimburse Town Meeting voter authorization from this past May's Town Meeting. Helps reimburse $400,000 to $950,000 that voters unanimously supported toward the Six Ponds Greatwoods project, the effort to preserve approximately 75 acres within the Six Pond Special District, which Harwich Conservation Trust is leading in partnership with the Town. We have about $500,000 left to go by the end of the year. So congratulations on receiving approval for that grant. Also, I wanted to mention that what maintains the Town's eligibility to apply and receive those grants is an up-to-date open space and recreation plan. And I ask that the Select Board, in a future meeting, find funds to support an update of the plan, so the Town can continue to be eligible to apply for these important grants. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Michael. Anyone else for public comment announcement? Town Administrator?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, first. As you'll see on the agenda, the next Board of Selectmen meeting is scheduled for Monday evening, November 7th, here in the Griffin Room at 6:00 p.m. The Board has in your packet the current committee vacancies list as of October 20th, 2022. It's a robust list with a number of openings, and again, we would urge any and all interested parties to check that on the website and fill out an application, because our committees are only good as the volunteers that are willing to serve on them. You heard the comments about the Veterans Day event. The Chief of Police will be holding his annual licensing meeting. As the Board will recall, this is an annual event that Chief Gilmete hosts for any of the establishments that have liquor license in the Town of Harwich, and that event is set for November 2nd at 10:00 a.m. at the Public Safety Building. Notices have -- if haven't already gone out, we'll go out notifying all the establishments of that opportunity. In your packet, we have a notice that there is a Housing to Protect Cape Cod Summit. This event is taking place on November 3rd from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. at the Cape Cod Inn and Resort in Hyannis. I know I'm going to be participating in that on behalf of the Town and the Trust, but it's great for anyone that wants to support housing on Cape Cod. There's an opportunity to donate, and there's also an opportunity to learn more about what needs to be done here on the Cape Cod for housing. And last but by no means least, just a reminder that I will be hosting a community engagement forum tomorrow evening, so that's Tuesday, October 25th. This topic is about traffic and safety in Harwich Port. So this is October 25th at 6:00 p.m. at the former middle school, 204 Sisson Road. It'll be in the library, which is where we had the community engagement on affordable housing. So again, that's tomorrow night, October 25th, 6:00 p.m. at 204 Sisson Road Library.
Thank you. Mary, will you do the committee vacancies?
Yes. On the committee vacancies, I'm going to read the list, but I also want to encourage people, even if a committee you're interested in doesn't have any openings, but if you're interested in it, you should get your application in, so that when an opening occurs, we already have you on file, because we don't go through a posting process. But the current ones are agricultural, capital outlay, forest, culture, energy and climate action, housing, historic district, planning board, real estate and open space, treasure chest, voter information, youth services, and zoning board of appeals.
Thank you, Mary. Joe?
Can you just make an announcement about the availability of seats? I know we have people outside, and we want to make sure they know that they can be accommodated in the room.
Now, we let everyone else out there know there is seats over here in the corner, and there's a few seats sprinkled in. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Joe. With the Board's indulgence, I'd like to take two items out of order. Is that okay?
Yeah, sure.
First item is the Item B under new business, because Michael Locke is here now. Approve three conservation restrictions for the following properties. Michael, we did not get that vetted by legal in time, so we cannot vote on that tonight. I'm sure the Board would entertain a meeting, so you don't have to wait a couple weeks, as long as we get the information back in time, but I didn't want to see you sit through tonight if you don't have to, and call anyone that you had coming for later in the meeting. Is that okay with the Board? All set? Second is the public hearing. Approve the change of a class application, seasonal all alcohol liquor license to annual all alcohol liquor license for Round Cove Resort Beverage LLC, Wacoastet Inn, 2173 Route 28. Tom, will you open the public hearing?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Notice of public hearing for the Town of Harwich Board of Selectmen, application for change of classification. Notice is hereby given under Chapter 138 of the Massachusetts General Laws as amended that application has been made to this Board for a change of classification, seasonal to annual. For the seasonal on-premise all-alcoholic beverages licensed held by Round Cove Resort Beverage LLC, DBA Wacoastet Inn, 2173 Route 28, Harwich, Massachusetts, Alton Keen Loong -- oh, long name, Chung Manager. The Board of Selectmen will be -- will hold a public hearing on the application on Monday, October 24th, 2022, no earlier than 6:00 p.m. in the Griffin Room at Harwich Town Hall, 732 Main Street, Harwich, Massachusetts, 02645. Remote participation is also available. See posted agenda for dial-in information. It's signed the Board of Selectmen local -- as the local licensing authority, and it was published in the Cape Cod Chronicle, October 6, 2022.
The public hearing is open. Anyone in the public wish to comment on this?
Good evening, Select Board members and Town Administrator. I'm Alton, the general manager, the long name that you -- you got it, you got it. But I'm really honored and excited to be here to talk about what is happening at Wacoastet and the reason for the requests of the change from a seasonal to an annual liquor license. So one of the things that Wacoastet is, is one of our big investments that we've done over the years is really into the guests that come to our property, the community that comes in and use our property and dines at our property, and really Harwich, the community that we are in. And we've always been in this for the long game, to see how can we continue to contribute back to where we are located as a business. And the concept that we talk about a lot is economic vibrancy on Cape Cod. For myself, I've lived here now for five years with four kids, and this is a wonderful place to raise and raise my kids, but we always look at ways as a business, is how can we continue to support the people that have lived here for many years and those who are looking to come to the Cape? So one of the big decisions that we're making is, we are aspiring to go from being a seasonal property to now being open year-round. And this is something that Wacoastet has been talking about for many years, and we feel now is the time to do it, and next year is when we're hoping to do it, is to open starting year-round. And we truly believe this is going to do two things for us. One, it's going to provide jobs for people that work at Wacoastet, that we're trying to find an economical way for them to be able to live year-round on the Cape and to have work year-round. And the second thing for us is being able to have the opportunity to open up Wacoastet to the community, to be able to create more activities during the winter, create more dining options during the winter, and we believe over the long term, this contributes to the overall vibrancy of Harwich and the Cape year-round. And that's why we think this move, although we do think there's a lot of headwinds as a business to say, hey, how do you keep open in January, February, and March, but we truly believe this is a right step in contributing to the community as well as building our business. So thank you for everyone for letting me speak.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public wish to comment? Anyone online? I get a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Moved and seconded to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four to zero, Joe? Or deliberation or a motion? I'll start with Tom.
I'm really excited. I -- apologies to you, but I'm really excited, because I presuppose that that was the rationale. Watching the growth of Wacoastet through the years, over the past 30 years, basically, it's amazing to see it morph into what it is, and I personally wish you well. It's an integral part of Harwich, now that it's moved its post office. Now that it's moved its post office.
Thank you.
You used to be in Chatham, whether you realize it or not.
Mary?
He had to say that.
I'm okay.
Mary?
No, thrilled to have you open year-round. Can we have some jazz in January?
Motion to approve?
I move that we approve the conversion of the existing license from seasonal to annual.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four to zero. Congratulations. Next up is the Main Street Bog topic. There's four items on here. We can take them as one, but we will start with the discuss -- discussion of a two-year extension for the lease agreement between the Town of Harwich and Leo G. Kukounis, DBA Cape Farm Supply. The other topics on this go along with it. One is to discuss the lease fee structure, sorry, and then discuss working towards an intermunicipal agreement with the Cape Tech for Main Street Bog, which would be an agricultural education center. Exciting news, I think, for the Town of Harwich and for the tech school. And then discuss working on a draft article for Town Meeting for the Main Street Bog, so that we can get there. This topic has been discussed on more than one occasion with the Conservation Commission, the agricultural center, I should say, maybe not the lease agreement, but we are here tonight to discuss those and hopefully enter into a lease extension for the bog, so that we can get this through Town Meeting probably two years from now, when we go through the legislature, to get this approved. See, Mr. Kukounis at the microphone. Do you want to start?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to just give you a little background and history on this, too, if I may, for the public record and for the public that is watching. I was awarded this lease 21 years ago. Seems like yesterday, but actually stood in front of the Board then and thanked them. I had an infant daughter at the time, and now she's a police officer and moved off Cape, and wow, 20 years has gone by quick. For the record, the Town, Board of Selectmen, and the Conservation Commission has an input, but the Town has to make a decision this evening. It was a dream -- you have three options. One option is to release the bog as an agricultural operation. I would hope that you would have a 20-year timeframe also, because economically, no one is going to bid on anything five or 10 years. They cannot get a return on investment. So that's one option. Second option, which the Town has done many of times, is allow these agricultural lands that they have purchased to go fallow. And quite frankly, I'm not for that one, as a taxpayer in this town. The third option is in front of you this evening. I had a dream. I'm going to use that little quote. Been five years now that I've been working on this dream. I realized that five years ago, that the -- to keep a vibrant agricultural operation going on that piece of property, I had to come up with some kind of innovative thinking. I approached the tech school at the time, and they were very much interested, five years ago, to move forward on an agricultural education center. I was asked to take a backseat until the new tech school was built, because they didn't want to take on too many endeavors at once. Last year, this Board voted to extend my 20-year lease one year, and I agreed to that extension because I was hoping that the Town would move forward with an intermunicipal agreement with the tech school to create this agricultural center. Wheels of government move slowly. Here we are now, a year later, and I am sad this report, that an awful lot of the mechanics have not moved forward yet. The other items on this list, the first one is just extending my current lease, but the other items on this list are directly related to the reasons why I would accept an extension to the lease. I need to know, does the Town want to go down the road to build an agricultural education center on that property? I wrote a memorandum of understanding for you people for the tech school. It was three pages long. I've written many memorandums of understanding between governmental bodies as my tenure as a county commissioner. That was sent off to lawyers, and as all lawyers do, became -- three pages became 300. There was also some discovery on the ability of how the Town purchased that land and if there would require legislative movement to allow the school, and myself, by the way, because I'm going to be involved with the school, to move forward with portable classrooms, and for the sake of not getting into it heavy tonight, changing the use from an agricultural, strictly agricultural use, to agricultural educational use. Both those are defined separately in Massachusetts general law. So before -- I'm before you this evening to ask for really one thing and one thing only, and that's a commitment from this Board, if that's the road you want to go down. I need from you, and the school needs from you, a memorandum of understanding, which is agreed upon by you, the Board of Selectmen, whatever other boards and commissions you want to involve in the Town. It is agreed upon by the school, passed muster with their lawyers and your lawyers, and just don't sign it. Give it to me, so then I can go to the state legislature with the Town and the school, if necessary, to get any appropriate votes or movement from the state, so we can go forward on this. I'm not going to stand here and tell you the benefits of it, because I've already done that to all of you, but for those in the public that are listening, I do have to touch upon a couple of things. This would be a model for not only the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, but for the rest of the country, to get a tech school, to get in partnership with a Town, to get in partnership with a nonprofit, which, by the way, I intend on creating a nonprofit that will be supporting, if you will, like the Friends of the Community Center or the Friends of the Council on Aging. This would be the Friends of the Agricultural Center, so they'll be able to apply for grants and donations and raise money to move forward with this center. Now, there is going to be some discussion, and I'm sure this evening, about the actual growth of cranberries. It absolutely is the intentions of the tech school to use the grounds and the cranberry vines and bogs that are viable there to grow cranberries on. The difference is, they're not going to be growing them for the purposes of selling them at what was $10 a hundred pound, now is $20 a hundred pound, because there's no money in growing cranberries. They want to use that as a chalkboard. They want to use it as teaching not only children in high school, but college-level young adults, on the control of inputs and how those inputs migrate through the soil. These are important issues that are going to come forward in the next 20 years. Michael Locke is here from the Conservation Trust. I'm sure he can back me up on this, and I'm sure none of you are going to be in a position where you're going to argue with me on that one. Saving our environment is the key, important issue right now, and to have a center devoted to teaching not only high-school-age young adults, but college-age young adults, for everything from forestry management -- this Town owns a lot of land, as Mr. Locke just said, to even creating those plans that he just asked you to create. What better group of people to do that than young adults who know how to use a computer and know how to work the words? It's a big plus for this community. So again, I'm not asking you this evening for a two-year extension. Really not. I'm asking you this evening for a commitment to an agricultural education center. If you feel that you are going to be committed to that, and you want the Town to move forward in that direction, I will do everything in my power to help you get that. The only other options you have on your table are two. Give me 30 days, and I'll be happy to get everything out of there, and put it out for another 20-year agricultural lease, and I'll make the decision then whether I want to bid on it or not, or let it go fallow, because that's the only three options you have in front of you this evening. So when you do, or if you do decide to vote this extension of the current lease that I have, please know, it's not so I can be a cranberry grower. The reason why you're voting it is because you're going to be telling me, Leo, we want to move forward with this center, because I'm going to be hounding you for that memorandum of understanding, because that's the document that we, the tech school and myself, need to present to the state, so they can tell us what hoops we have to jump through, or maybe not. Might just go for a vote on the floor. I don't know. They know about this. Our state legislature knows about it. Both our representatives here in Harwich know about it. They're on board with it, but they need a document. They just can't go to the state floor and say, Leo Kukounis has a dream. No, they need a document. So please understand what you're voting this evening. It is going to be a commitment. I've already worked with the Town Administrator, and I think he and I are ready to move forward to finalize some documents. Again, they don't need to be signed, but they need to be agreed upon, so we know what we need at the legislative level. So with all that, I'd say thank you very much for your consideration this evening, and we'll see what happens.
Thank you, Leo. Town Administrator?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Really not much more to add than the previous speaker. I will say, we slightly disagree on procedure insofar as, in my opinion, the Town shouldn't just hand it off and say, go with God and go to the legislature. I think if the Town is going to proceed with this, with the tech, it behooves all three parties, the Town, the school district, and anyone that is looking to advocate for that use. For you folks this evening, notwithstanding the comments of the previous speaker, you do, the Board, have some obligations regarding the lease itself, and that's what you have in front of you. I will add, as Mr. Kukounis said, that the tech school, the conservation agent, attorneys for both the Town and the tech school have been working on this matter since about March of this past year, and there were things that were discovered that if the Town wants to go forward on this, requires legislative intervention and perhaps some other actions. And I say perhaps some other actions, because some of that is relative to legal strategy that the Board should not discuss tonight, but should discuss in a separate meeting in executive session. For me, it's fairly straightforward. The question's before the Board, the question's before you in the agenda, and I can certainly fill in the blanks possibly if necessary.
Thank you, Joe. Comments or questions, Mary? And then I'm going to get to the public after the Board.
It all sounds good to me, but I thought from the cheap seats back in my living room, I read, I don't know, three or four years ago, that this was underway. Is this -- is this is not -- this is new. Why did I think I already read about this going on?
Been, yeah.
Larry, you can answer Mary to the whole public. And then add your comments.
I will, thank you. To answer Mary's question, it's been under discussion for at least five years, longer. I know, Leo, you and I have talked about it, and we have talked to the school, unfortunately, underlying the principle that government moves very slowly. But I like it -- I like it very much, and I do like Joe's comments in that if we do move ahead, we need to put everything behind it, and not just hand it off, Leo. I appreciate that. But I want full resources behind it. Dan, you have some questions while you're up, Leo.
Okay, well, just so I can comment on that, if I may, Mr. Chairman, to Mr. Ballotan, I didn't mean to say that I would be the only one up there. I would work with the Town, with the legislature, with the legislatures, obviously, but again, it's not something I can do alone. I need the Town, and you guys don't really need me, but I'm willing to offer my services. So you can run with it, Joe, play all means, but I want to be there to help you. That's all.
Let me ask a question, if I may. I was a little confused on the two-year lease versus the memorandum of agreement. Can you walk me through that? Because if I would -- is a two-year lease only to open the window for the MOI, and then that would continue longer?
I turn to the Town Administrator for that.
Generally speaking, yes. The two-year lease agreement gives us time to work through the necessary legislative structure, and the two years mirrors their process as well. So it may not take the full two years, but rather than coming back every year, I would recommend that you extend for two years. We then take the next steps, perhaps as early as your next meeting, and we work through the legislative process, which would be no more than two years.
Okay. So this is the initial step to get to the agreement with the school?
And if I could very quickly, I would just add that the recommendation on the terms of the lease were not from the current LSE. That's coming from me. I think if we're going to go forward on this, we want to give ourselves ample time and match up both efforts on the same cycle.
I'm very much in favor of it. I do like the fact that you're going to maintain the cranberry bog. I guess maybe I take a little exception, just from growing up on a farm in Iowa. I guess maybe I take a little exception just from growing up on a farm in Iowa, long removed, with the concept that the farmer's out to destroy the earth. Nothing could be farther from, from the truth. That's their livelihood, so everyone's trying always to protect the environment. This would help us, I think, Leo, if I see your, what you're trying to do, this has benefit from educational purpose, but also has benefit to other cranberry growers, in helping, if anything, better manage, integrate pest management programs and other programs to enhance the cranberry bog in our environment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, but that's not the main focus. The cranberry growers have a, have their own site up in Wareham. They do a lot of their own studies. I do believe and envision that this school will be working hand-in-hand with that extension services up there, also with our local extension service here in the county, not only geared to just cranberries, but other inputs. Previous speaker was up here at the mic, concerned about clearing vegetation on the power lines. I've been asking for 10 years to have a study done locally on how glyphosate roundup travels through our sandy soils. There is no study like that that I know that exists. This is a perfect opportunity and a perfect, once again, chalkboard to do studies like that. Will that benefit cranberry growers? Absolutely. It also benefit homeowners and may benefit people like the gentleman that was speaking about clearing right-of-ways. So, so it'll be all encompassing. Yes, you are correct, Mr. Ballatine, but I just don't want you to be, believe that this is going to be strictly focused on the growth of cranberries.
Well, that's evident in your document, because you do a lot of other things. I was focusing that point on what I believe is important, that we protect our cranberry heritage to the extent we can.
Absolutely.
And, and having local students involved will only enhance what the extension service does already. So I'm all for that. It's a good-looking program. I like to see it fully committed.
Thank you, Larry. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't have a lot to add to what Mary and Larry had said. It's apparent that there is a bunch of, a bunch of junctures, we dropped the ball, and I mean, we probably here, we, because I agree with Mary, there was, we were talking about this, and apparently we just talked. We didn't do anything following on. I'd like to just take stock myself, before I have an opinion formed at all, of what conservation feels about what happened, where they are, and what they'd like to see happen. Leo's already said what he is. As long as we're having this conversation, I'd like to have it with everybody.
Thank you, Don. All right, I will open it up to the public.
Good evening. I'm Ernie Crabtree. I'm the chair of the Conservation Commission.
Can I ask one question, please? Are you here representing the Conservation Commission tonight, and did you have a public meeting to vote for you to do so? Or are you Ernie Crabtree, resident of the town of Harwich?
No. We have had a number of hearings on this. We've not had a vote, one way or the other, on this particular proposal.
So is the board comfortable with three members of the Conservation Commission here tonight, and another one that's been actively involved, presenting before us tonight, representing the Conservation Commission, when they have not had a meeting to do so?
They've had discussions.
I don't know.
I am not.
That sounds dicey to me. I would prefer that you speak as you as an individual from conservation.
And I don't believe it's dicey at all. Open meeting law speaks for itself, and they have not had a meeting to present to us tonight. And I believe that if they want to speak individually, they can speak individually. But if we give them permission, we're telling everybody in this room and everybody watching, it's okay to violate open meeting law. Don?
I think we're parsing, we're trying to create an argument here. If that's the case, I'm not sure I'd be prepared to do anything tonight until I had the opportunity to meet, take a vote, come back, and then have the secondary discussion. That's all I'm saying, is I'd like to hear from everybody, because we've, we've basically frittered away a year already. We haven't done anything. So I'd like to know before we start the car and start driving off, what's the destination? Where are we going?
Thank you. Go ahead.
All right, thank you. First thing I would like to do tonight, we've had, as I mentioned, a number of hearings on this. Back in September of '21, Mr. Kakounis came to us, and he gave a formal presentation to the Conservation Commission about his plans for this. And I'd like to go on the record tonight to thank him, both for his foresight and his vision to turn this property into an educational center that I think is going to really support the agricultural history and the culture of our town. So we are very much in favor of this. And I say that as from a personal perspective, and also reflecting the feedback that we got during our, our public hearings on the Conservation Commission. Following that, May of 2022, Bob Sandborn, who's the superintendent of the Technical Cape Cod Tech, came and gave his presentation to us. He, at that time, we didn't know some of the issues that have since come up as far as the legal impediments to this. And he was hoping to have the process, the introductory programs in place within a year from that date. So it gives us some, some idea, once we get all the legislative problems out of the way, that perhaps would be about a year for the tech to actually get this thing up and running. So we did start work. We reviewed a draft of an interim municipal agreement, an interim municipal agreement. We haven't proceeded too far on that, I think, because of the other issues that have come up. But one of the things that is a problem from our perspective, that I do want to mention to the, to the board, is that back in December of 2009, apparently the Conservation Commission, this preceded my time, had asked KP Law to review the procedures for leasing conservation land for all of the different bogs that we presently had under our control. They went through them, and in particular, mentioned the Main Street bogs. And what they concluded on that was that in August of 2001, the town meeting vote specifically authorized the commission, the Conservation Commission, with input from the Board of Selectment, to execute a long-term lease of the cranberry bog for agricultural purposes. They subsequently found, determined that the lease that was signed, the 20-year lease, was only signed by the Board of Selectment. So they, they viewed that as problematic. They said, and this is John Gregorio, said, "It is my opinion that both the members of the Board of Selectmen and the commission should have exec," pardon me, executed the lease pursuant to the August 2001 town meeting vote. With that in mind, I know the Board of Selectmen has approved the lease for one year. The consideration on the, on the agenda was to approve it or extend it one more period of time. The Conservation Commission and our informal discussions that we've had among the members would not be in favor of extending the lease again, primarily because there are no agricultural activities taking place on the bog right now. So I present that to you. I ask that you take that into consideration. And based on the legal opinion that we have, a copy of this was also provided to the Board of Selectmen and the town administrator back in 2009, that you can go forward and act accordingly from that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ernie, real quick, can you send that document to staff, please?
Yes, I will.
And where, would you answer where you came up with that document, and has it been discussed in an open meeting to the public prior to tonight?
I, I was just sent this document this morning from Amy.
Okay.
So I don't know where she found it. There is one page that contains a sort of a summary chart that we haven't been able to locate. Hopefully, administration might have that. But I, you know, not having any, any opportunity to really delve deeper into this, I, I mentioned it, and, and that's all that I can tell you at this point.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, this is Amy Usowsky, the Conservation Administrator. May I respond to that a little bit?
You can respond only to the document, and then I've got to get some other people, and I'll call back on you. But if you want to respond to the production of the document, you can.
Yep, that's what I would like to respond to. So in my efforts to try to find all the documents that kind of pertain to this property, I had remembered back in 2017, I had provided this 2009 opinion from council, which 2009 was before my time here, but it was pertinent back in 2017, when the commission was talking about the Herring River bogs. And I remembered that document, and I still had it, and I saw that it pertained to the Main Street bogs as well. So that's why I shared it with Ernie, in hopes of, you know, showing, mentioning it, and then, of course, providing it again to you folks to further the discussion on it. So that, that was the intent there. We'd be more than happy to get you a copy of that letter.
Thank you, Amy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Powers, Richard Wastack from Howard. Mr. Kakounis has been a caretaker of that property for a while. I think the discussion at hand for an agricultural center is a great one. I would urge you to extend the lease for another year so that we can get together. You heard lots of different folks weighing in on this idea. I think it'd be a great opportunity sometime to get everyone together at a public hearing to discuss it, air it out, work it out. The concern I have is you have someone willing to volunteer to run with something. We've seen some organizations come together, the Howard Conservation Trust, the Howard Fire Association, to do something over in Bank Street. You've got great opportunities. Without that extension, he's not going to do that. He'll clear that out, put it out for an RFP. What's going to happen with it? I think you've got a great opportunity to extend that lease, number one. Number two, I think we've got a great opportunity to get all the players together, whether it be conservation, our friends from HCT, anyone interested in doing this, together at a public hearing, air out the issues. But you've got someone willing to take a great project for this community, move it forward. I would strongly urge you to extend that lease for another year.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, on the two points that were given by the chairman of the Conservation Commission, is there anybody in this room that was around back in 2000, when I signed the original lease? Don, you were here, right?
Oh, yeah. How's the Selectman?
I, I just not sure, but I question the fact that a Conservation Commission has the authority to lease municipal property. And if I remember correctly, as we went back, and they signed the lease at that time, the commissions was, approved it, however, they did not sign the actual lease document, because the attorneys at that time said they have no authority, commissions, committees have no authority to lease town property. But that's just one thing that I want to clarify. I don't think anything was done illegally back then, or wrong, or overseen, because they, I did go in front of the commission, they did approve it, they approved the lease, but they didn't actually legally sign the document, number one. Number two, I take great exception with the statement that that property is not being used for agricultural purposes. For 20 years, I've put my life into that property. I've harvested that bog every year for 20 years. I have records to show it. I raised sheep there. I raised pigs there. We had pumpkin patch at one time that I had there. I've only strictly used it for agricultural purposes. One of the bidders on it that I beat out 20 years ago wanted to create a tree farm there and sell plants and plantings. And the Board of Selectmen at that time didn't want that. They didn't want town land being used to somehow support a business and be competing against other people in that business. That's why I never did that on that property. Did I harvest it this year? No, I did not. Our agreement, when we extended it from the year, is that I was going to be there to clean it out, go through the stuff that the school wanted, keep some of the stuff that I wanted, and then work with the school to go down and create the agricultural center. This year, there was a drought. This year, I had a lot of stuff going on. I have not, did not harvest the bog this year. Not harvesting a cranberry bog for one year does not constitute it not being an agricultural use. And if you want to go on that statement, then I have a grower right in this room who had, lives on a fallow bog for over 20 years, and now it's a producing bog again. So I don't want to hear again that this property has not been used as an agricultural use. Okay? Now, once again, I have no problem, I cannot say this strongly enough, if this board does not want to move forward, do not extend the lease. Give me courtesy time, courtesy time, a month. I'll have contractors in there, I'll get it all cleaned out, and let it sit fallow, just like the rest of the bogs are doing here in this town.
Thank you, Leo. Don, you want to answer the question about the lease?
Yeah. I do have knowledge about that. As a matter of fact, KP Law was the successor to Copelman and Page, hence the KP part when they were purchased. And it never ceases to amaze me how the law can say the same, but depending on which lawyer is looking at the document, the opinion can change. KP, as, as Copelman and Page, we did go through them to vet the contract, and it was determined that there was no statutory authority on the part of the Conservation Commission to sign a lease binding the town, that it was a responsibility of the Board of Selectmen to do, which is why the lease was let in, in the first place. So, I mean, what Leo's saying is accurate, and it is also accurate to say that at the town meeting that was decided upon, that the public was engaged in discussion that led to the public believing that they were going to get two things. They were going to get the upland being protected as conservation land, and they were going to get the bog working as a legacy bog for the town of Harwich as part of its farming legacy. I'm pretty big on what town meeting says. That was the discussion, that was the promise. Trying to figure out how to get from here to where we need to get is really the point of discussion I'm interested in right now, because we're at where we are. We're not going to change the economics. Leo's accurate, the contract was let legally based on a review of Copelman and Page at the time. We also renewed it last year, so the real, the central question is, okay, now what? Is he going to walk, or are we going to just let it become a rodent trap, or are we going to do something positive with it?
Thank you, Don. Alan, I would just say, your chairman spoke, and under the open meeting law...
I'm not speaking as a commission member.
Okay. If you speak about it, it's considered deliberation, if the Conservation Commission, and you're taking a chance.
I'm speaking as Alan Hall, North Howard, Depot Street.
You're taking a, you're taking a chance, because if it's any deliberation about what we're talking about...
This is in response to an accusation that was just given to me.
Well, I'm not going to get into...
I believe it was towards me, because I don't know if there's any other cranberry growers on this side of the room.
All right, I'm not getting into that tonight. I'm ruling it out of order.
But I'm just for the record.
I'm not ruling it out of order. I'm not getting into whether or not his comment about a fallow bog is, is correct or not.
I want to just correct that statement, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
You have a minute.
My grandfather owned that property since 1962. He was there 365 days a year. He worked that property till the day he died, on April 4th, 2006. To make an acquisition that I've been sitting here and sitting on that property over there, doing nothing on a fallow bog, you're totally incorrect. I've been through the board, the Conservation Boards, I fought the fight, I've done everything to keep that bog active in agriculture. Agriculture is a use that is maintained. You can do digging ditches, water withdrawal permits, all the above, fire permits, all those things. I was here tonight in support of this, okay, of the, of the Cape Cod Tech. But if we're going to start throwing things around the community to try to just steer the, the direction, I was here, I was going to say, because I'm a seventh-generation cranberry grower from this town of Harwich, okay? I've been an advocate to keep cranberry bogs going forever. All right? I want to see that bog...
It's a slippery slope, Alan, because you're on a commission, and right now, we are, we're, you, you, you guys are into deliberation. It's not, I, I understand, and you, and you proved your point.
This is the United States' flag behind you, Michael.
I understand. You're on a commission, you took an oath, and you are deliberating at this point.
I'm coming as a...
I'm, I'm telling you. That's all, I'm, I'm telling you, you are now deliberating.
Okay, folks.
And not, not for nothing, Alan, just, just, if, if, just end it now, because quite frankly, your chairman has already said, "I've spoken to other members of the board and other commission, and we're not interested in the renewal." And I know for a fact that four of you have had a conversation, and it's disgusting to me that we are sitting here now doing this and deliberating with, with, not a quorum of the commission, but with a third person that was at the meeting the other day with them that is not here. a third person that was at the meeting the other day with them that is not here. It stinks, and it's not okay, and we need to move on. And I'm telling you now that you are now deliberating with commission agents, and you're going to go back and have meetings on this very subject. And I'm telling you, no more. It's over.
My freedom of speech is gone.
I'm telling you, you're not talking about this now. You've been warned about open meeting, unless, unless you want to ramble on and get an open meeting law violation. But you're deliberating on something-
I can't even talk about the Cape Cod Tech.
You're deliberating, we'll get back to that. You're deliberating on something that-
So if I sit down, I can come back to Cape Cod Tech?
Your commission member got up and said, "We, the commission, have discussed this." Now you are deliberating. That's it.
I don't, okay. I don't agree. I don't respectfully disagree.
Okay. Thank you.
Just move on.
Moving, moving forward, does anyone else in the audience wish to speak that's not on the Conservation Commission? Any follow-up from the board?
Yes, I, I still, I guess I would point to Joe, my initial discussion, but it seems to me that there's, our best action tonight is to move ahead with a two-year lease agreement so we can start the discussions that we talked about. I personally feel that we've hung this up over and over and over again, and it may not take place. There's obstacles that Leo mentioned, that town administrator mentioned. I think now's the time to start, and we can schedule the discussions. So, I will wait for, but I'll make a motion when it's appropriate.
Okay. And to a previous speaker, Mr. Waystack, we have a member of the community that's been on this bog for 21 years now. And now, all of a sudden, this week, several of these things have come up. And I've spoken to several members of the Conservation Commission, and it's been brought to this meeting tonight. Inappropriately, I would add. We, the board, leased that property. We, the board, tonight are being asked to extend the lease to a gentleman that has agreed to give the tech school all of his equipment, his tools, and everything else he has over there that they want, and then remove the rest of the property. So he's asking for some time, not only to clean it up, because he's already told us he'll do it in 30 days, which isn't acceptable to some, but now he's being, he's asking that he drive this dream of his. And I don't see how we take that away from him and the public. And I do agree that we should have public hearings to see with the public. I agree with the town administrator in that process, and Mr. Waystack, that we should have some public meetings. The Conservation Commission should have some public meetings. But they should be done in public meetings where people can go and speak in opposition. And to all the comments that have been made this week about the condition of the property, we conveyed that property to Mr. Kakounis, and we trusted Mr. Kakounis with that property. We don't get to just go enter his property and, and do our own inspection and not do this at a, at a public meeting. This stuff needs to be done at public meetings with the Conservation Commission. And I would ask the interview committee that they bring the Conservation Committee back in and discuss what open meeting law is, so that we're not put in this position. With that, I'd like to get a motion on the lease extension.
Mr. Chair, I move that we extend the lease between the town of Howard and Leo Kakounis, you call it Cape Cod Farms, is the legal?
Cape Cod Supply.
Cape Farm Supply until commencing November 1st, 2022, and terminating October 31st, 2024.
Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? Don?
The only thing I'd like to be locked in on is, we were here a year ago. What's the action plan, and who's responsible for each of these sections? We don't even have Bob Sandbord in the room. If we drop the ball, which it appears that we did, at this, at this board here, we need to know what's the next step, and when is it going to happen?
I fully agree. I think we turn that over to our town minister and Joe, and come back with action steps. But that's, that's, I see that as outside my motion in the second. Because I don't want to repeat myself, but I will. Need to start this-
Don, are you comfortable with an action plan on the next three steps?
Yeah, as long as we promise that that's part of-
Part of the motion, okay.
Of the motion.
We can do that.
That would, in the interim, we'll-
Yes.
We'll develop an action plan.
I do agree. We don't want to drop the ball again. We want discussion, we want it going-
Any further, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four to zero. Discuss leave fee structure for Main Street bog. There's a fee chart in the, in the catalog, in the packet tonight, and it showed that he paid $4,000 his last year. Mr. Kakounis?
The fee structure is based with a 2.5% increase every year, too. I made this year's payments on the extension following that same street fee structure, and I suggest the board leave it the same.
Okay.
I guess.
Discussion? Don?
That sounds-
I don't.
Sounds very reasonable.
Joe?
So then, if I may, the board has in your packet an extension of lease of rail property, which you've just voted to accept. So you'll be signing it. There are two blank spaces for the rent, based on the current agreement and what the lessee has said. I would recommend that the rent then, based on those factors, would be $4,100 for the period of November 1st, 2022, through October 31st, 2023. And then the rate for November 1st, 2023, to October 31st, 2024, would be $4,203, recognizing that the town rounded up. But that comports with your schedule, plus the 2.5% that you've used for the last two decades.
My comment on that is, I think we should be working this backwards now with, with what we've heard tonight, without it being an active cranberry bog, and more of a steward of the land approach while we work on an educational component. Why would we do an escalated lease based on cranberry farming? And I don't see why we wouldn't just put a, and I know he's going to argue against it, but I don't know why we would want to put 4,000 and change on it and wind it backwards, just with the agreement that he's already made that he's going to remove the belongings the tech school's not going to want. Mr. Kakounis?
The lease was not based on cranberry production. There was an option in the original RFP that went out that I could have done that. And for the record, the town has taken almost $80,000 from me in the last 20 years for lease payments on this property. I want you to know that, number one. I have, I don't have a problem with leaving it the way it is. If you're going to do any amendments at all to the lease, or any additions to this document that you're having, the only thing that I will add here publicly, I will ask you to be gentlemen and ladies in representing the town. And if at any time you want to issue me a notice to quit, give me 90 days, and I'll be very happy to pack up and go.
Thank you. Larry?
My only, my only concern, Michael, with your, with your point is, does that anyway jeopardize our discussions getting through the State House if he's not actively paying the lease?
Joe?
I want to be careful, careful with that, that we don't, I take your point. I just want to be careful not putting this in a corner.
So in an effort to try and wrap together the essence of all the items under the agenda for this topic, and comments of previous speakers notwithstanding, I would urge the board to adopt the rent fee structure that I just mentioned, because as the lessee has just said, we are extending an existing agreement, and this matches with that in the same and similar manner. And I believe Selectmen Ballantyne is also on to something that if we, we, the town, as a party to any future agreements, would be questioned, we could say that the board authorizing its rights on property in the town has acted in a consistent manner. And if I could continue just a moment to say, with regard to questions on an action plan, this is the action plan. You have extended the lease for two years, you'll set a rent structure. The parties in question, meaning the lessee, the Cape Tech, and the town, through the conservation agent, and the town's attorney, had been working on those agreements. So that agreement has been very well vetted. The next steps would be on what it would take either legislatively to the State House or legislatively at a town meeting. So that is the action plan, and this is step number two in that action plan.
Thank you. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. All I can say in response to that is, a plan that's not executed is not a plan. It's a wish list.
It's not executed.
That's, that's, that's what my point was. We, we said this last year, we, great intentions, we wrote it down, and we're no further along than we were, other than a draft of an agreement. We, we've got to get to the point where the key players are putting their signatures on this, and we're going to the legislature. That's the only real successful conclusion.
Joe?
I don't know that we're in an argument, but I would say that the parties worked over the last year with council. Council identified an action that requires further discussion from the board. Council recommended extending the lease. Council recommends the fee structure. So it isn't that the parties didn't do anything. It's that the attorneys found a matter that goes above and beyond the board and the lessee, and the only way we get there is if you take these actions. So I do want to put it out there that the parties involved have not done anything other than have been working on this assiduously over the last year.
Thank you. Can I get a motion on the lease structure? Lease fee structure. Mary, do you want, you wrote the numbers down?
I wrote the numbers down. I think I have them right. I move that we approve the lease fee structure for the Main Street bog, and the rent shall be $4,100 for November 1st, 2022, through October 31st, 2023, and $4,203 for the period November 1st, 2023, to October 31st, 2024.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The next topic would be work towards an intermunicipal agreement with the Cape Cod Tech for the Main Street bog.
So as I stated earlier, Mr. Chairman, the parties and probably equally important attorneys for both Cape Tech and the town have been working on the document. So really, the IMA is in fairly good shape to be evaluated minimally, meaning there's only one or two open questions, and that's more of a procedural nature. Really, the next thing is for the board to probably meet with council in executive session to clear up any of those privileged items that council's aware of that have not been discussed tonight, as well as the legislative process that would need to take place.
Thank you, Joe. Mr. Hall, did you want to speak on this?
Well, the inner, the whole workings-
Yes. Mr. Hall, I would keep it brief, and I would just introduce yourself as where you, who you are and where you're from, and that you're speaking on behalf of yourself. And this is-
Mr. Chairman, sorry. I apologize for interrupting, but from my perspective, the key word was, you said you planned on supporting. If the Conservation Commission is going to have a role in this, you can't make a statement that you're going to support something that the commission has yet to deliberate, because you have a quorum present. So any of the speakers for Conservation would be wise to simply make statements to the process, but not whether or not there was support.
Pardon me for my ignorance, and I apologize to the whole town if I did something out of line, but I don't think I did. All I'm here for is to talk about his idea, the concept of the tech school. I don't know about the inner workings and all this other stuff, okay? We got off topic on something else.
But the inner workings, Alan, as he just described, is you're going to deliberate on this with your commission.
I understand that.
Because you're, because you're going to, it would be inappropriate for you to be in this meeting tonight and say where you're at with it.
I'm not going to say where I'm at. I got a suggestion of what we could do over there, as a, to see heritage.
Can't allow it, Alan.
There'll be a time.
I know. I, I just talk about cranberry bogs. That's all I want to talk about. I want to keep the history of the cranberry bogs in this town. That's all I'm trying to do. That's it. You guys, you've known me since we went to school together, Michael. You've been on the bogs when you were kids, all right? I'm cranberries. And I don't want to see them die in this town. The commercials started here with Cyrus Cahoon, right where the place, where the tech school's located, in that area. So I just want to keep that. That's all I'm trying to do. That's all, that's why I got on the Conservation Board, is to protect and preserve the cranberries. So it's a huge part of this town. This town's foundations is whaling, sea captains, fishing, cranberries, tourism now, real estate markets. That's all I want to do, is keep the cranberries going. Mr. Kakounis, if we talked out of deliberation, he'd call me Friday, just for the record, okay? So, that's it.
Thank you, Alan. Anyone else wish to speak on this one? Joe, do you don't need an action, because it's already underway, correct?
Correct. And if I could just jump to item number four, any discussion on any potential articles for town meeting? Staff and I are tracking that as a potential article, but really, your discussion with council is going to determine next steps, if there is a town meeting act that's required, separate from the legislative action.
Thank you. Don?
Mr. Chair, we're going every other weekend. Can I urge that we do this as soon as possible, then? Because if we're off a weekend, on a weekend, off a week, we're going to burn a month easily.
Joe?
I thought that was more for the board to-
That's, I'm in with Don on that. Mary?
Yeah.
Sooner rather than later. Larry, sooner rather than later. Thank you. Thank you. All set?
Yep.
Okay, moving on. Public hearings, we're done with. Annual committee presentations, thank you for all, all for coming tonight. We have your, we have your committee presentations in the packet, the written reports. If you want to touch on the highlights of them, you can see the long list of them, that was done intentionally. Touch on the highlights, and then board members can ask you questions from there. So we'll start with the BikeWays Committee. Anywhere you want to be.
Good evening, Select Board. Paul Gazai from the BikeWays Committee. Quick highlights, yeah, we're tasked with overseeing the Old Colony Rail Trail. We suggest improvements, maintenance. We try to have everybody enjoy biking and walking and using our trails. We continuously see the OCRT usage, I mean, it goes up every year. We just see a lot of bicyclists, and I think right now, they're probably about 70% of the usage of our, of our trail right now. We continue as a board to, or as a committee, to recommend, you know, the implementation of, which you've heard from me before, the crossing lights. Last year, we, I guess we got lucky. We installed, first of all, two lights, one on Depot Road and one in Headwaters, and we were fortunate to score a grant. Even though we had CPC funding, we rescinded it, or at least a CPC request, we rescinded it because we were able to get a grant, so it didn't cost the town anything. So we got two lights in. This year, I don't know if we're going to get a grant. So we have currently CPC requests in right now, and we'll see where it goes. Of course, we'll, we'll look for a grant if we can. I mean, you know, if we can save some money for the town, we will. We just want a safe town, you know? We had one incident this year, unfortunately, and, you know, I think lights help. We got one CPC, like I say, one coming in right now for Oak Street. And, you know, we'll go through the process as we has been, you know, every year. And the other thing we did this year, too, is something simple, is put together, you know, a border marker between Howard and Chatham, because no one knew where it ended. We try to do a lot of good things. I mean, you know, at the Rotary, we put a lot of additional signage, tell people where to go, how to go, towards town, beaches, and, and Brooks Park, you know? I mean, we've got water stations there now, we've got bathrooms. A lot of good things are happening. At the Rotary, too, we, you're probably, if you're not bikers, you know, we've got map boxes there. Actually, this year, we kind of went a little tech, as far as I'm concerned. We've got QR codes there, so for people who don't want to handle, you know, paper itself. So our primarily focus is, you know, on the attention, of course, of Howard, but we try to interact with Chatham. We also spend some time with Cape Cod Commission, and we try to share ideas. I mean, actually, that's where we got our grant, through the Cape Cod Commission. So it, it helps. Our committee is, consists of Franz Alwisky, who's our chairman, myself, Charlie Wakely, Eric Levy, Andrew Dacken, Alan Ferry, and Charlene Pilon. We have no vacancies, or one of very few, I guess. We have fun with what we're doing, we try to do what's well for, for the town. We're all sworn in, we're all up to date with our ethics, and our chairman will want to actually just say thank you also to Jacqueline Pence Green, who stepped down, but we were able to fill it with Alan Ferry, which was great. Our charge, again, is, I feel, represents what we do. We don't need to change anything. We put our agendas, we submit our agendas, our minutes, as need be. And if we need help, we get help from Julie, Julie, who's our liaison. She came to our meeting a couple weeks ago, and we're going to need her help in the future. And lastly, we want to thank RDPW, Link, and Sean Libby, and the whole staff, I mean, help us with various projects. I mean, we're, we're always out there, I'm always emailing Link, you know, Trees Down- Trees down, dirt's here, whatever. They respond quickly, and I just want to say thanks to their, their team, and thanks to all the committees that we deal with.
Any questions? Thank you very much. Larry?
Thank you. Great job. Nice report. I enjoy the trails. One item I've seen that is a bit troubling is occasionally, well, let me use an example.
I'm sorry I'm not.
I'm going to take this off. I'm, I'm ten days out of COVID, so I'm, I'm allowed to be here as long as I'm careful with my mask, and I don't sit too close.
That's all right. No, I'm just not hearing. I just, it's me.
I, I, I came along, came across almost a fistfight earlier this spring on Queen Admiral, this side of the dump, the landfill, excuse me, folks, landfill. Because a family had stopped, you know, normally to talk and reorganize, and they, of course, the light stays on forever then. And then the truck driver got really mad at them for holding the light up, and there was no one's fault and bad tempers. I don't know what to resolve. I can think of maybe some type of notice that don't loiter next to the sign might help. I think also, there might be occasionally, the signs say now to stop and walk across the road. It might be better to say, stop and ride across the road so you're off the road as quick as you can, but. They won't do that?
Nope.
It's against state law. Okay, I'm trying to speed up the time going across.
State is looking at it.
Just, just, just to the public that's watching from home, everyone in the crowd is saying that's against state law.
Please don't do that.
We can only talk out of microphone.
I, I, I got that part of it. So the other part, I don't know if there's any sign or anything to, you know, so people don't hang out there, I guess.
I can bring it up at the next meeting. I know there's, I don't know exactly which area. I know there's some areas that are, I'm going to say there's a large, a piece of pavement, you know, before the lights, so that people would be able to do that without kicking off the, the lights, but I'll bring it up at our next committee meeting.
Thank you. Don?
Sorry, Larry. A blinking yellow light is a caution light. It is not a stoplight. And second of all, if you're on the bicycle, you are a lesser vehicle as defined by state law. You have to be off the bicycle to be a pedestrian. That's, that's my piece. You teach drivers that.
We have a lot of Canadian reports, so we're going to get off topic in this conversation. Mary?
No, just, thank you very much. A great report, and I love the fact that you recognize Link and Sean Libby and the DPW. I appreciate you doing that. I also like the font size on your report.
That's for me.
A great report. And we are in receipt of your request this year for CPC for another crossing, and administrator will sign.
Thank you.
Thank you. Board of Appeals. Good evening.
Hey, folks. I'm, I'm Brian Sullivan, the chairman of the Board of Appeals.
Good evening.
It, so currently, the Howard's Board of Appeals has seven members, five regular members and two alternates. Myself as chairman, Al Dunneu as clerk, David Ryer, Chris Murphy, David Nunnally, and two alternate members, Joe Beasley and, and Tim Bailey. The, I think you're all reading from the report itself. All the members are sworn in and up to date with the ethics training. And the agendas and meetings are posted to the town website monthly. We were behind there for a little bit this, this year. I believe it's been, been caught up, but staffing issues and so forth have been difficult. The, the board is regularly, the board held its regularly scheduled meetings throughout 2022. And as of October thirteenth, we've had thirty-three applications. The cases consist, consisted of the following. Special permits, there were twenty-two, which were granted. Variances, five that were granted. There was one extension and three modifications. There were no motions to dismiss. Matter of right, there was none. Appeals of any other decisions, that has not happened, there have been none. And we've had no fortyB application so far this year. And overall, the member attendance has been excellent. We have not had any problem absenteeism, okay? Everyone's been, pretty much, the majority of our meetings, everyone's on board. The, I didn't realize we had, the board is supposed to be up to eight. You mentioned there's still one vacancy. It operates very well at seven at the moment, but David Ryer, David Ryer will be leaving at the end of this current term, which I believe expires the end of June. So it, it will be important for us to, to fill that, at least. I think we could possibly fill that eighth vacancy this, this spring. That would be excellent, so the person could get on board, the feet wet, and, you know, get used to the committee and, and be ready when, when Dave leaves. David decided this last year not to be phased out as being chairman. And I succeeded him, but couldn't possibly replace him. He has done the past an excellent job. The, the only request I have, the board, from reading in the papers and so forth, as I understand, the consensus of the board's selectmen is for a comprehensive review of the town code. And as it applies to chapter three twenty-five, the zoning code, zoning code, the board appeals request involvement in this review. Main reason is there are some codes that are now conflicting with legislature, okay? Also, they're actually conflicted amongst themselves. And actually, not let's say, but land court articles. So with that, when we go through that, and in the future, as the, as the planning board approves new zoning codes, we'd like to be, you know, in the loop, so we can review it and give our, and give our interpretation of any problems that we see with the code as presented.
Thank you.
Can I hear any questions, or?
Yeah, the eight has, I was just scrolling through the charter, and it's, the last zoning board of appeals that I have is five members and five associate members.
Okay.
Alternates.
Yeah, so we can have up to ten.
Yeah, we really.
Right. So right now, you've got a full board and two alternates, the way I'm hearing it.
Correct.
Okay. All right.
But I would like to have someone else on board this spring.
Okay. And we have the ability to do that now, so we can add, add that to the list. And Joe, prior to coming in the room, the board of appeals wants to be part of, when we work on the code as it relates to zoning, they want to be a part of that process.
We, we want them and need them to be, so absolutely.
Appreciate that.
Tag your eth.
Questions? Larry?
Nice report. Thank you.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to be sorry to see Dave leave myself, but the other thing that I was hoping that you would ask for, unless this is a hundred percent true, is everybody taken training on comprehensive permits under fortyB? All of your active members?
No.
That I would hope that, if, if you need money, ask for money. It's not big, it's not big money, if, but I suspect that you could get to a workshop with either Hack or CDP for free, depending on who it is it needs to have the training.
We've, we, we have the handbooks. We've been through that and so forth. There's a fortyB handbook out there, and we've also, I've been through a process recently as far as making sure that our board is up to speed on comprehensive permit applications and so forth, so.
It's a, it's a dense place, even things that we do want, like the Marie Lane project for Habitat took one, two and a half years. So it would be helpful, because reading it, it's dense reading. I mean, there's certain things that are your responsibility. There are other things that you can ask for, so it's better to know that going in than it is to try to read up on it as somebody's in with a permit request.
Yeah, we had a, we had one meeting and discussion with the town attorney. We had a special meeting for that. And we also recently, you know, checked out as far as getting a consultant in and getting those, you know, those grants for having a consultant involved with the process, should that happen. Okay, so we did that. But if, Joe, if there's an opportunity, you can let me know what these training opportunities are, you know, for that. I'm not aware of them as far as where to go for those CPC trainings, other than the fact we have, other than the fact of reading the fortyB manual, which we have.
CDP and Hack both do seminars for people that do that. I'm just saying that we're going to have.
I will look into it.
Guaranteed on the horizon, you're going to be seeing both types of fortyBs. Commercial endeavors that are trying to do something as a hostile fortyB, and even our own fortyBs. Waiting for that to happen is probably a mistake. If you could get ready ahead of time, it would be terrific.
Yeah. We haven't been, you know, as I said, waiting, and given, you know, other things that may be going on, we've been trying to get our, our knowledge up to speed. And I said, you know, met with council and so forth, and with selectmen at that meeting, just to make, make sure we were on board with, should a fortyB ever come in front of us, what the processes are.
Don, will you send him the ones you know of?
Yeah.
Thank you.
That'd be great.
Joe?
Actually, to the ones that we just mentioned, as much as the town wants to be proactive on that, and we've tried, we've been advised by both council and Mass Housing Partnership, that they do not provide the training until there is an application that has been served. They work within the timeframe so that the, the board of appeals has given ample time. But the more salient point is, they will not provide the training absent the fortyB. They work through the fortyB process. We were expecting to be able to bring them under contract, thinking that we had received a fortyB. We have not. Just been made aware that a project that is seeking a fortyB comprehensive permit has only received funding. Once, once that next step takes place, council on behalf of the zoning board is prepared to contact Mass Housing Partnership so that they begin that consultative action and training.
Thank you, Joe.
Yeah, a P E L letter was, was approved.
Let's, let's wrap this one up.
Really quickly, I was aware of that. I've spoken with MHPs. As a matter of fact, they were the ones who told me that the Hack and CDP presentations were distillations of their own. So it may be like the Cliff Notes first, then they get the, the actual, MHP actually trumps everybody anyway.
Mary?
Nothing, just, thank you, and it's nice to have a committee that's functioning so very well. So I thank you for that.
Well, I appreciate that. Thanks a lot, folks.
Great report. Thank you.
Thank you.
Board of Assessors.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, this is the board. Mr. Powers, Richard Wastack for the Board of Assessors. We have a detailed report in your packet. I won't go through that. But I would like to take the opportunity to introduce a couple of our staff members who are here tonight. We, by the way, do not have a quorum, so we're not posted for this evening. Our interim assessor, Gail McElair, is here. Gail, please say hello, if you would. And our assistant assessor, Ms. Carly Jones. And I wanted to recognize them, because I, we were before you a couple of months ago. These folks have been working diligently on the Article thirty-nine work of identifying parcels. And they have already, to this date, identified assessed values of parcels over a million dollars with over seven thousand dollars in taxes that have been returned to the town. So they have been working diligent, and they deserve the recognition for the work that they've been doing. And very quickly, I want to remind, as I do every one of this year, our snowbirds who are going to spend some time down in Florida. You'll be receiving your third quarter bill with the Christmas present that's always giving. It usually arrives the week between Christmas and New Year's. Your third quarter bill will also have your new assessed value on your tax bill. And if anyone wishes to challenge that, and this is the year that we will probably see some of those abatements because of the real estate market. Your assessed value follows the market value of your property. So for those who wish to challenge their value on their assessment, they will have thirty days from the time that that bill is mailed, or no later than February first. The Board of Assessors website has the abatement application. You can most certainly fill it out. That is the end of my report. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Wastack. Larry?
Richard, I have two questions, which I hope will be short.
You're only allowed one each. I'm sorry.
Well, it'll be one question with two parts. The, the great opportunities we have for work-off programs and stuff. How many people are taking advantage of that?
Approximately ten this year.
Ten this year. And thank you for asking the question. That work-off program, along with the other programs that we have, allows our seniors in need that meet certain criteria to get up to three thousand dollars off of their tax bill. Second part?
Second part is, you follow legislation to hardship exemption. You have an update for us on where that stands?
I wish I had a better update, but it's still being looked at in committee. And what the selectman is speaking about is that we, as a board, filed with the legislature to create a hardship exemption for those under the age of sixty. We have no, there's nothing allowed currently under law in Massachusetts. We know that there are a number of folks in our community who are struggling to make ends meet with their taxes. This bill, which would be a local option, would allow us to create a bill, money to be taken from our overlay account, that would assist those folks under certain criteria and very similar criteria that is currently utilized for our seniors.
Thank you, Richard.
Thank you.
Don?
You're all doing a great job, and you're headed in a great direction.
Mary?
Larry asked my question. Just thank you for all you do for the seniors, the veterans, and trying to take care of the under sixties. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great work. Thank you. We are, Joe and I met last week for a November agenda item to bring forward Article thirty-nine for a joint meeting, so that we can talk about how we can move forward with that. You've done great work, a lot more than I expected at this point. But with everything else going on, we've been a little stalled on that, the working group we talked about. But we're going to ramp that up in November.
Just, I need to recognize again, the work of the assistant assessor. And, and those who don't know, Ms. McElair is a contract employee, and she works part-time as the interim assessor. Ms. Jones is the assistant assessor. She works full-time in the department, and many times this year, she's been doing the work with two or three people. So she really needs to be recognized for the work she does, and we appreciate having her in the office.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. Brooks Free Library trustees.
Good evening. Linda Sebula, I'm the chair of the Brooks Free Library. We have several of our trustees here this evening. I see Joanne Brown, Mr. Kroll, Mrs. Wastack, Mrs. Wheeler, and Mrs. McCarthy. We are not having a meeting. We are not posted. And this report did go through our trustees and has been voted upon, so we're safe. You have our report? Do you have any com, or questions?
Thank you. Larry?
One question, getting back to Richard's concern. The, if he had, this may be directed as much towards Joel as to you, Linda, but has been an update on the procurement of the sidewalk.
Not that we know of.
This is, Joel, you have an update on that?
I'd have to check with the staff responsible for that.
Okay.
Going to give you a no on that one.
Well, I, I'm waiting for a response when we, if you give back to me on that, that'd be great.
Don?
Yeah, my, this is an off point. In my work with Site Law Services, I come in contact pretty much Cape-wide with all the libraries. Carla does the vital program. I have to say, we should be very proud. We've got one of the finest libraries on Cape Cod, probably in southeast Massachusetts.
Thank you, Don. Mary?
I only echo what Brother Don said. It's just an incredible library. Thrilled to have it, and thank you for all you do.
The staff has, works tirelessly. Jenny Hewitt, our librarian, just makes things happen. I can't say enough for our staff during the pandemic. You know, almost in a heartbeat, they had the books out the front door in little bags. They had all of that processed done. They've done a tremendous job under a lot of stress. And, and I'd like to commend them for that, but it is a team effort.
Michael, if I may?
Another one?
We'd be remiss, no, not a question, a comment. We'd be, we'd be remiss, I know, this is a comment. It's different than a question. We'd be remiss for not thanking Emily for all the work she did before.
Oh, you just stole my, you stole mine. Hats off to Emily Myland in the back, who is moving on, but has done an amazing job.
Well, we're none too pleased with her, but it is a good opportunity.
I like this. Linda, you're much more direct than Jenny. Anyone hear from Capitol Outlay, Joe?
I don't believe the chairman is present.
Okay, Capitol Outlay report is in the packet. More to follow on that in another meeting.
Good evening, Chairman and the board. My name is Steve Connor. I'm the chairman of the Cemetery Commission. We have a, we have a full board, members of Cindy Eldridge, Rob, and Rob Thompson. We're all up to date with our ethics, ethics, and, and all been sworn in. And our, our selectman liaison is Mr. Don Howell. We, we have presented the whole, the whole report, and you have that all in. The exciting parts are the Veterans Memorial Circle. We have the electricity is all been put in over there. That is, we're just waiting for the landscaper, and we get bids out for that with the final plans. And hopefully, that's going to be ready by Memorial Day of 2023. And we got a new CPC article going in for the Walker Remembrance for the Revolutionary and Civil War monuments to go on, all part of the same, the same memorial over there. We spent a lot of time this, this year going over the rules and regulations, and we will be having open meetings in, and we're going to try to plan at least one in November, maybe two, to discuss all the rule changes. And then we just got from the garden club, we got awarded, the, the garden club of Howard, which is pleased to inform that the James G. Marshland Arboretum in Island Pond has been selected for the winner of our 2022 Civic Beautification Award for non-residential gardens. Does he have any questions?
Thank you very much.
Does he have the whole report?
Larry?
I have none. Great job.
Don?
You're doing a great job, and that you haven't seen me is an indication because I don't go to places that, that don't need my presence.
The cemetery, they haven't seen you at the meeting?
No, I know business is picking up because I know of at least one new customer over the last few weeks.
Mary?
Just appreciate the thoroughness of the regulations review. I think it's so important that that gets public input before it goes further. So really appreciate you guys doing that.
Do you have an idea when you're going to have that public hearing in November on the cemetery rules? Just want to let Dana DeCosta know, and I think he's here. Oh, he is here, yeah.
Yeah, Rob, Robin's going to schedule that?
Yeah, I'm going to schedule that.
Okay. And then, great report. There's only one thing in that report that I think I wanted to point out to the administrator, and it was, it was related to an employee issue, and it's related to an administrative assistant or an assistant. I don't believe that that's the purview of the commission, and it shows that it's your future work. That would be town administrator and the department head. And I know we took that up, so it was a little off to me to see it in here, but if you could meet with the department head and talk about the...
I have a quick update, if you'd like.
Go ahead.
So any of the department heads that I've worked with, that are single-person department heads, they're all struck with essentially the same issue of no administrative support. So we can contemplate an article creating an administrative support person for all four, but that will then become a priority discussion and funding discussion through the board. Otherwise, I believe all of the issues in the past have been resolved as the cemetery administrator and I met earlier in the month. She's doing well with her office space, with her landlord, so to speak, landlady. And I think DBW has picked up the slack on the coverage for vacations and all of that.
Thank you. Had that question from another board member, so I thought it was important to put it out tonight. Thank you very much. Community Center Facilities Committee.
Good evening. I'm Angelina Ranio-Chalaka, and I know that you have a full agenda tonight, so I'm going to be very brief in my summary of the facilities committee, but encourage the public to take a look at the report that's provided in the packet that you have. I just wanted to highlight, we have confirmed with the town clerk that the members of our facility committee are all sworn in and have completed the ethics training. We meet monthly, second Friday of the month, at 10:00 a.m. at the community center, and we have filmed it with Channel 18. All of our agendas and meetings are posted, and they're up to date. We continue to work on programming for the community and have started working with not only different town departments, but also with the Monterey School District to provide multi-generational programs. And this was a biggie for us this year, so we're really excited. Upcoming events that are coming, and hopefully many of you will participate or join in. We have the Halloween Drive, which is coming up this Friday, October 28th. We have the Mad Science Event coming up on November 4th. Family Fun Crafting Event coming up on November 17th. And we are now working with the Cape Cod Theater Company, once, the Howard Junior Theater, on a costume display in the building during November. So if you have any other questions that you'd like to ask me, I'll be happy to answer. If not, I'd like to thank everybody on the committee and thank everybody on the facility committee. And thank you.
Thank you. Mary?
No, we're just lucky to have that facility and to have the staff and, and the committee to do all the work that you do. And I was glad to finally read who takes care of the garden because it's always gorgeous. So thank you for, compliments to Tony Hollingsworth. She does a great job.
Definitely, definitely.
Thanks, Angie.
Yeah, thank you. Have a good night.
Can't add to that. Angie, you do a great job.
Mary?
No, great job by the committee. I'm always amazed on how you're always looking at new opportunities. And oftentimes, and always, with limited funding. And so, and obviously, great support from Carolyn Carey.
Thank you. Now I don't have to mention Carolyn. Great job, Carolyn. Great report. Thank you. Council on Aging.
Again, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Powers, Richard Wastack for the Council on Aging. We do not have a quorum here tonight, but I do want to recognize one of our members who is here, the previous speaker, Angelina Ranio-Chalaka. All of you should know, if you don't, that she was named the Mercy Otis Warren Woman of the Year for 2022. And she's a tremendous member of our Council on Aging. We are very, very blessed to have her, and she does a lot of work in this community. So Angie, thank you for all that you do. There's also, again, you've got my very substantial report you filed. Don't need to go over that. But it's also my pleasure to introduce, first time to you as a board, our new Council on Aging director, who was with us here this evening. Julie Wittes, please. So Julie has been a member of, was they our social services coordinator, correct?
Yeah.
Good, good, good. She's worked very diligently with a lot of our seniors here in this community, and she has been, Mr. Powers appointed her eight weeks ago?
Couple, couple months, in July.
Okay, in July. So she's been doing a great job for us, but we wanted her to have an opportunity to meet you and to, you'll be seeing her, I'm sure, during budget season. She'll be going through her first budget as a department head, and she's doing a great job for us. So we thank her for all of her hard work. And I just want to very briefly explain. Julie is here as the department head of the Council on Aging. I am here as the chairman of the Council on Aging. There are two differences there. And a lot of times, people confuse us with them and them with us. We're not staff members. Julie and her staff are. They're paid by the town. They run the day-to-day operation. We are there as an organization to advocate for the seniors, their families, and caregivers in our community. The third group is the friends of the Council on Aging. And I'm sorry, Chris Joyce Lofk, who's wanting to recognize her, but they have been supporting both our work and the work of the council for unbudgeted items, for things that come up, for emergency situations in our community. And I couldn't come up tonight without recognizing a gentleman who was president of that organization for many, many years. He was a good friend of many of us here tonight, Mr. Jack Brown, who passed away this year. So Jim Nickman is now the new president. They do wonderful work with three distinct organizations, and we're very pleased to have Ms. Wittes on board. Do you have anything you'd like to share? Microphone.
Just very pleased to meet you all, and thank you for having me.
Questions? Larry?
No, I agree. Great, great job. I would add another piece to that, and I'm always very positive. It's how great you work together with the community center as well in the, in that group.
We're very fortunate to have such a lovely space, and it is very nice to have an intergenerational space to host our programs in. I think that's a very, we're very blessed to have such a great space to be, to be housed in.
Don?
Just very grateful to have the three teams in place that have done all they have through the years. You guys all do a great job.
Mary?
Another great committee, and I appreciate that you recognized your 100 volunteers. As Richard and I know from other places, volunteers are the life of the matter.
We absolutely could not do anything without them.
Great report. Thank you.
Thank you.
Finance Committee.
You didn't hear that yet. Great reports. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Peter Hughes from South Harwich, chair in the Finance Committee. Just so you know, we are posted. We do have a quorum here, actually, this evening. We have eight of our members here with us this evening, or nine, I think. Let me count. We have a quorum. First and foremost, you should know that within the past week, the moderator has made two appointments to fill out our board. Bob McCready, Bob, stand up, everybody knows you, but, there you go. And Michelle Galucci, Michelle. Also pleased to report, I think for the first time in Harwich history, the Finance Committee has a Wharton graduate on the board, so watch out. It's going to be fast and furious. So we're counting on big things. With the exception of our new members who have 30 days after, as you know, after they have been sworn in to do their ethics test and whatnot. We are all up to date. We have excellent attendance, people enthusiastic. Our meeting minutes are up to date, so we are all current. As I told you on the report, we have executed our duties and responsibilities as outlined in the charter and the bylaws. I will say that we are a bit flummoxed by our exclusion from any of the work going on existing, having to do with the middle school. We are here to serve if and when you are ready to have us do so. I'd also point out that as we prepare for the 2024 budget season, we have communicated through the town administrator a list of reports and documents we would like to see sooner rather than later to help us with our work as we move forward. So we're ready to go, and we're excited about having a full board and entertain any questions.
Larry?
I have none. We'll, we'll, we meet again. I know.
Don?
No questions. I do have friends on the Finance Committee, though, so it's, it's not as if we're all loggerheads with each other here.
Lagerheads?
Lagerheads. That's, look it up.
I was expecting you were going to ask me if you could Google flummox. I don't know. I thought that would be a new word.
Save that one for me.
Much to my consternation, I already know what flummoxed is.
I'm going to take flummox. I'm an English major. I'm just surprised that you're flummoxed. I came to one of your last meetings, and we talked about the new director of Cultural Affairs, once she got the historic, not the historic, the, the cultural district squared away, because there was some change at the state level. Her next task with Joe, with, I'm pointing the wrong way, with Joe and with Sean Libby, and I'm not sure who else, is to work on that building. And then we will all get that data. So we're not holding any data from you. You got to wait the process.
We are here to serve, so whenever you're ready to have us, we're ready to help.
We appreciate that.
Okay.
Yeah, I was perplexed by that as well.
And you were flummoxed.
Yeah. However, two of your members are on the Capital Outlay Committee, and two of your members have been attending those meetings where these conversations have started, and really where, or Capital Outlay. Where, where it starts is Capital Outlay, and, and your members are involved. So I'm a little surprised by the statement that you're being excluded from it, because I don't, I don't see it.
Okay, so if I could just back up, I thought a town meeting, spring town meeting, and our discussions there and discussions on town meeting floor, there would be a, a true partnership going forward, I guess I would say, and that we would be involved, you know, up to this point. I recognize the fact that the town administrator has to define with you folks what the town use, you know, section of that building is. And we do recognize that you're bringing, you brought on a new council director. Two of our members did a half a walk-through, if you will, of the building. I guess we're expecting that maybe there'd be some more discussions about that. We had Rich Florios in our meeting last week to talk about, you know, what was on the Capital Outlay Committee, or the Capital Outlay Plan. And we'll just leave it at that. You know, we're ready to help.
We will, we will be meeting on this in November with the new director that we've got over there, and everybody will have an update. We'll move forward from there. But we're not not working on it, but it certainly starts with the town administrator and the department head and Capital Outlay, then to the board and Finance Committee.
All right.
And Peter, I know you and I have had a conversation about this, and this has come up in other committees lately, is voted subcommittees. So if your committee voted a subcommittee, did you, did you unwind that? Because I can't find any agendas.
No, but we will. If that's, if that's the preference.
The important piece is, if you're going to have a subcommittee of any, any number of your committee, you have to post agendas
Right.
of everything you're doing and minutes.
Right.
And none of that exists to date.
Yep, that's correct.
The board of selectmen doesn't have an intention right now of having a subcommittee for that, for 204 Sisson Row. We, we, we plan on working through the administrator. And I would assume your committee can work through Capital Outlay, but that's up to you. But please let them know that they need to make this public.
Yep.
What they're doing, and that they don't have any control over department heads or the town administrator whatsoever.
As you and I have discussed on that matter, and we have agreed, and we agree with the town administrator, that the flow of information will be through the town administrator. It has been.
Great.
That has worked very well, I believe, Joe. I mean, I...
I would agree.
Yeah, so...
Well, welcome aboard. I thought town meeting, fall town meeting went great with the Finance Committee.
It did.
Everything went, went smoothly and, and went right along. So thank you.
Look forward to the next one, right?
It might be longer.
It'll definitely be longer.
Joe Powers.
Just while there are representatives from both boards, a reminder that you have your joint meeting on December 5th with Capital Outlay. And again, we have the Budget Roundtable, I think it's been called before, that's scheduled for March 4th. So just a reminder that you've got those dates in the book for both boards to meet jointly.
Perfect.
Who can think ahead that far to March 4th?
189 days till town meeting.
He can't.
All right?
Thank you, Peter.
All right, I'm going to home watch the game.
Harwich Cultural Council.
Good evening, members of the board and Mr. Powers. I'm Bernadette Wastack. I'm the current chair of the Harwich Cultural Council. You have my report. There's just a couple of updates for you there. Due to the fact that the Board of Selectmen's deadline was at noon on October 17th, and the MCC's deadline for grants to be submitted was at midnight, I gave you an estimate at that time. MCC's system crashed as everyone tried to put their grant reports in and finalize their submissions, so they extended everything for 48 more hours. And we went from about 22 to we now have in hand 32 grants that have come in for us to go over in our next couple of meetings. That will be what we will be doing, reviewing all those grants, measuring them against our criteria, and making, you know, decisions about what to approve and what to award. In addition to that, the only other thing I want to mention is that on Thursday, this Thursday, October 27th, the assessor from the Mass Cultural Council will be coming down to conduct the district audit for the two cultural districts. Along with Kara Moeney, our Director of Cultural Affairs, and Cindy Williams from the Chamber, myself, and other interested cultural partners, will be navigating the two districts on Thursday, and that's the last piece that has to be done. In January, it goes before the Mass Cultural Council for a vote, and we're very optimistic that we will at long last have the designation for our two cultural councils, cultural districts. The rest is in my report. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. If not...
Excellent. Thank you. Mary?
Fabulous report, Bernadette. And I'll just make a pitch for you. I know that the Cultural Council is looking for a couple of committee members.
Mm-hmm.
And at one of the meetings I attended, they suggested that there is more to culture than just painting-type art. They'd love to get a writer, or what were some of the other people you...
It's, it's not that, Mary, it's, it's, culture means more than just arts in general. A lot of times, people hear art, they think just visual arts. It's visual and performing. It's literary. It's culinary. There's a lot that's just in that art box. But culture encompasses more. It's history. It's interpretive sciences. It's, you know, any one of a number of things. A lot of the stuff that people in this room are on boards and committees to guide and steward us through, it's everything Mr. Kakounis was talking about with the agriculture. That's part of our culture. So it's very important, and thank you for allowing me to bring that up, because even myself, and even the members of the council, we constantly have to remind ourselves. People hear culture, and I think a lot of us do just think arts. The arts, and that's a broad spectrum of things, is just one piece of the culture, of everything that makes up the heart and soul of what is Harwich.
Thanks for all you do.
Thank you.
Don? Don.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, these are very exciting times, because it's, for a town to have not one, but two cultural districts is phenomenal, especially one our size, so.
Yes.
Some really terrific things are running off.
There's two points there, if you permit me, I believe we will be the only, we are the first and will be the only town or city in the state to have two. They are no longer gonna consider or contemplate that, but because it was in the works, it's gonna happen. And as I keep saying to a lot of other people too, I believe we are the first, and at the moment, the only town or city that has a Director of Cultural Affairs. But a lot is happening very quickly, and a lot's coming together, and I think that with the vision that we have, some of us, we're gonna look back 10 years from now and go, look at what we've done, it's gonna be great.
Thank you. Great report, thank you.
Thank you.
Could I miss?
I missed her, no, no.
Good, Larry.
Dismiss me, I'm sorry.
Joe?
There was one other item, just to say in the presence of the chair, a reminder, later on this evening, we're gonna talk about town meeting articles, and both for the Chamber of Commerce, Cultural Council, and the other libraries, we've had these standard articles, so as you know, we've made it a practice, we, the board and administration, so the petition article that used to be submitted is now an article presented by the town on behalf of the Cultural Council. So that'll be another thing that we'll talk about, that that is an annual active effort by the town to offer more assistance, and no need to get petition signatures anymore.
Thank you, Joe.
Thanks.
Recreation and youth.
Good evening, John Mahan, Chairman of the Harwich Rec and Youth Commission, and I want to thank you for figuring out a way to keep me awake for the Patriots game this evening. So you have a copy of our report, a few highlights, we have a full commission, and I want to give a kudos to the rec director, as I'm sure a lot of you saw during the springtime, a lot of towns had a hard time getting lifeguards and did not staff their beaches. We were fortunate enough to have a full complement return, so we had full complement of lifeguards this summer. So a lot of that goes to the fact that we have an in-house lifeguard certification, CPR training for the incoming lifeguards, so that's a, kudos. As you saw in the report, 2022 is our highest beach revenue year on record, the weather had a lot to do with that, obviously, we didn't have many rain days, the Brooks Park lights are done. Good things come to those who wait, and they're fantastic. You know, they, they look great, the contractor from the Boston area did a wonderful job. And then I'd just like to thank, as always, the taxpayers from the town of Harwich for their continued support of our CPC articles, and without them, we wouldn't be able to have the facilities we have. And then last but by no means least, thanks to the Harwich Highway Department. I mean, our parks, our beaches, our squares are just second to none, so thank you very much.
Thank you, John. Questions, Larry?
No, great job, we have a lot going on.
Don?
Get up.
Mary?
Yes, thank you for all you guys do, fabulous.
Thank you. Now hang around, John.
John, I got one for you. I got one for you. Are the time, are the lights on a timer at Brooks Park? Because someone asked me the other night, when pickleball ends, or whatever ends out there, is there a time they shut off, or?
They're supposed, they're on a sensor, so you can hit them and they stay on for how long, Eric?
About an hour.
About an hour. They're on right now, so I was gonna mention that to Eric, it's pretty foggy out there and the lights are.
Okay, John, you didn't read the agenda, because I've got you under the town administrator's report to talk about pickleball fees, so you're gonna stick around for another two hours.
I just came down with something, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, John. Traffic Safety Committee.
Linda Cibula, Chair of the Traffic Safety Committee, thank you, because I have a Patriots game to catch myself.
Wow.
You have our report, I think the only thing I'd like to point out is we're still waiting for the work to be done on our miles south, that little intersection, Pleasant Street, that has, I mean, it's in the utilities company, they've moved some of the wires, I'm hoping that before I die, that that intersection will be taken care of. And I think the only other thing is that we'd like to look at line of sight. I know that we all drive around this town, and there are bushes that are overgrown into the road, they are too close, you can't see, until you're in the middle of the road, you can't see anything, those are some of the things we'd like to continue to pursue. I think I'd like to see some, a bylaw come out of this, bylaw proposal, and see if we can get people that, they really do have to cut back their bushes.
Or the town will send that little machine with the arm like it's been.
I know there are other communities in the state that do that, that they actually will send you a little note that says, if you don't cut your bushes back, you have X number of days, or we will cut them back for you, and the town is less than judicious about the cutting.
Yes. Questions, Larry?
No, no, thank you, Linda.
Don?
I just wanted to bring up something that Lynn and I have spoken about, actually I've spoken to the chief too. In some instances around town, I would like, I would love traffic safety to get involved in this review, but in some instances around town, one side of the street has one speed limit going south, and another side of the street has a completely different speed limit going north. We've, we've done numbers of changes through the years, the roundabout brought traffic down to 15 miles per hour, but it doesn't look like you can go 40 again until you get to stop and shop, so we've, we've made changes, we, but we haven't always made them on both sides of the street, and we haven't actually analyzed when you're making the turn from a major road to a major road, if you can reestablish what those speed limits are. I would dearly love that, because I'm not even sure how they're making any tickets stick at the moment.
I'm not sure they give tickets.
I wasn't gonna go there, Linda.
Well, I mean, one of, one of the things in our report is that we do have a lot of complaints that we hear from our committee about people going too fast in excess of the speed limit, et cetera, et cetera. But I would bet that if we gave out a half dozen tickets for speeding in this town, which isn't a big amount, that that would go like wildfire through this community, and I bet you people would slow down, because it's really not an issue of whether the sign should say 30 versus 25, or 40 versus 30, it's really a matter of behavior change. And the only way that is really gonna happen, you know, you can do all the little letters to people in the Chronicle, and, you know, you should be obeying the speed limit, and blah, 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 blah. But what's really gonna make change is going to be to force change, and that's behavior modification. I mean, I'd like to see some speeding tickets go out. I live on, I go down, up and down Forest Street, that's my path getting to the center. People go whamming down that street to beat the band, that's a very narrow street, and we just, I think that we need to start giving tickets out. And I don't think it's gonna take five and a third new police officers to do that either.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes, Mary?
No, great report, thank you, Linda.
Yeah, just take the opportunity to say tomorrow night, Community Forum on Traffic Safety in Harwich Port, and that's 204 Sisson Road at 6:00 PM.
And the Traffic Safety Committee would have appreciated being part of that planning, and hopefully whatever comes up will come to us as issues.
We will, we will be before you, this is really Community Forum to get input on what they think.
Thank you.
Thank you, great report.
All right, game.
Voter Information Committee.
Good evening, since everyone's mad at me already, I'll just, I'll just go ahead and say, I just wanna get home and go to bed, it's a school night.
No Patriots?
Not interested in the Patriots game. Emily Mylin, previous Chair of Voter Information Committee, you have my report in writing, if you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them.
Larry?
No, Emily, great job.
Thank you.
Don?
It's just important to have a voter information committee, so people have, over the years, been dropping off from participation, and it's great that you're still doing what you're doing, even though you're not still doing what you're doing.
Okay, I was hoping you had seen the consent agenda.
Mary?
Fabulous work, I love that committee and your work on it, and you will be sorely missed, but I wish you all the best.
Yeah, I would take the opportunity to thank Pam Groswald and Chris Joyce for their years of service on voter information, and three holes that we're, we're really gonna have a hard time filling, so.
Yeah, really four, because we lost Peg last year, so, you know, Peg, Chris, Pam, were all big losses, we were holding it together this year, I think we did fairly well, you know, this last half of the year without them, but essentially, once you approve that consent agenda, the committee is on hiatus until we recruit some new members, and I really do hope that that happens prior to the spring town meeting and elections, because I think the committee, you know, serves an important role of keeping the voters informed. We're a small town, we're not Boston, we don't have WCVB hosting candidates forums, it was the committee's responsibility to do that. So it's my sincere hope that we'll be able to recruit some new members and get the committee back up and running.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Youth Services Committee. If you wanna consider a name change, you can get higher on the list for next year.
Lucky me with the Y at the end, good evening, thanks so much, a couple of highlights of our committee.
Just stay in your name for the record, and Mary's gonna zap me.
Jeffrey Craig, Chair of the committee.
Thank you.
Couple of highlights of this year, you know, obviously with large groups of kids getting together, we had a pretty big hiatus there, but we were able to get a large kickball game together with our middle schoolers going against the first responders of Chatham and Harwich. It was a great event, actually it was almost too big, it's like herding cats out there with us, I think we had over 80 kids. And since we've given you the report, which you have, we actually have had another event, which was in conjunction with the Recreation Commission of Chatham, we did a kickball game and also a Nerf gun war, and I think we had about 75 kids show up for that. So it's been really good to kind of get back to the norm, and we're happy as a committee. Had a little bit of prom with quorum due to scheduling conflicts and some personal stuff, but we're looking to get back together and be meeting on a regular basis, monthly, and, and supporting our, our department head, and just helping out the kids of the town, so.
Great, great job. Larry?
No, thank you, there's a lot going on now, and a lot of concerns with behavioral health and all that, so very much, your support is fantastic.
Don?
You know, it's, it's got a special place in my heart, Sheila knows, go back to like day one in this whole process, and it's important that our town values equally the youth as it does the council on aging for seniors. We had a heck of a horrible time in the early 2000s with behavioral problems and attempted suicides, and that you're not seeing that, the newspaper is a good thing.
Mary?
Thank you, I'm in awe of all that you do, every time I see the list, and I know a lot of it is Sheila, but with the committee's help, it's, it's just impressive what that small group does for the youth, so I really appreciate it.
And for the next kickball game, we want the selectmen to be playing on one of the sides. That is, that is imperative, I think.
I wanna play the Nerf, but what was Nerf?
Oh, trust me, you do not want to be a part of that chaos. I have a video I can show you, it's, there's a lot going on there.
Okay.
Sheila, do you wanna add anything that you?
I just wanted to.
Great report, Jeff, appreciate it.
I just wanted to say how much I appreciate this group of people, they're just, I, I don't wanna play favorites, but I think it's one of the best committees we've ever had, and we're actually gonna be trying to recruit some more middle school and elementary school parents, because the middle school age is the, that, that sort of three-year period that we, we really like to focus on, to make sure they have lots of stuff to do, so.
Great. Mary?
One other thing, we should let the public know that Sheila has just been announced as the Volunteer of the Year at Philanthropy Day, which is a huge honor. Competition for that award is very stiff, I know, 'cause I wrote a couple, I'm a very good writer, and I couldn't get them in, so, kudos to you, Sheila, well deserved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Golf Committee, and I'm not picking on you, because G definitely comes before Y. Originally, when we were putting the agenda together, we were talking about a joint meeting with the golf committee in the agenda prep, and that's why it got put there. So we were gonna double it up, but with the rest of the agenda, we decided not to have the joint meeting tonight, we'll do that another time, but thank you for staying.
Michael, thank you very much. Folks, you have the report, Clem Smith, Committee Chair for the Harwich Golf Committee. Pursuant to the report, I just wanna highlight a couple of things that, you know, really perhaps don't come across in the, in the text, if you will, and I encourage anybody from the town to really take a look at that carefully, because I think there are a lot of misconceptions about the contributions that the golf department makes to the town in terms of recreation. This was kind of a good segue, I think, since we're talking about youth. We really predicate everything we do on inclusion, if you will, growing the game of golf, and it's not just specific to golf, but the inclusion resides in seniors, juniors, men, women, people with handicaps as well, we've, we've covered a lot of bases in that respect, and it's all, I think, centered around the foundation of our management team, Roman Greer, his staff, and the successes that they've had. I think within that report, sometimes as far as perceptions are concerned, when you see something specific that's kind of data-driven, which was a customer satisfaction survey, this year was off the charts. We had a great response in that respect, and the other key thing, I think, that we've tried to, you know, amplify on is, in terms of inclusion, when you look at that calendar of scheduled events, we boasted this year the inclusion of the Chamber of Commerce again, we brought that tournament back to Harwich, and all kinds of youth events, if you will. It's there for everyone to certainly read, there are a lot of highlights, financial plateaus, and, you know, goals that we've reached, thanks to Roman and his group, but as far as future plans are concerned too, and we perhaps could highlight more than this, but I just wanna focus, 'cause it's an environmental issue, with a very, very progressive-minded focus on renewal of our irrigation system, we hope to recoup, you know, resources there, as well as being able to expend and expand the whole irrigation system, instead of the old paradigm of things, let's wait till it breaks, we're proactively taking steps to integrate a complete new system, and it will be done, you know, with financial attention to detail, so that taxpayers won't be impacted. It's basically promoted by, and serviced by the golf operation. And the last thing is the prospect of a short course putting complex that I think I characterized it as a potential reset for the committee to get fully engaged in a very, very ambitious project. I'd like to compliment, I'm gonna take advantage of the fact that Mr. Galvance here, in response to one of his newspaper articles that focused on this complex, I think I probably, in 10 years as Chair, have, have gotten the most feedback in a positive way on anything that we've done, so I'll leave it at that. Thank you, Bill. And folks, thank you, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you, Clem. Larry?
No, thank you, Clem, okay?
Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, just a couple of areas, and you know I've brought this up, but we were here at the Board of Selectmen, and you heard this earlier with FinCom too, you are now aware that you can't create a subcommittee unless you vote a subcommittee, you can't have them meet unless they are posting to meet, and there have to be meeting minutes, so.
Subcommittee is definitely a four-letter word.
Yeah, okay, but beyond that, just to be really clear, none of the work that they did is really, was legal in the first place, so there is no work, just, just so you understand that.
Yeah.
Second of all, I needed to clarify this, 'cause I dove into the first page of town site with the mission statement and everything, and then I looked at the charter, what do you think your role is in terms of day-to-day management and operations?
As, as a supporter of the management team, the town administrator, and strictly an advisory companion. advisory capacity, I think we have to draw the line there as far as, you know, being involved in, you know, things other than policy-driven. I think the role of the committee is pretty well-defined.
Okay. Because there was a comment on that page that you, as per the charter, you're engaged in day-to-day operations. That was replaced with the actual quote from the charter, because that is not true.
Yes. Thank you.
Mary?
I'd just like to know if your report was reviewed, and if you sought input from your complete committee before presenting this.
I did not, Mary. Most of the input, as far as the highlights were concerned, I tried to dialogue with our Director of Golf, and, you know, that supplies the, you know, the thrust of, you know, what I want to put focus on as far as highlights are concerned, what the future plans are.
I have a problem with that, because this is the committee's report, and at a minimum, the committee should have seen it before you present it to us. So I have an issue with that.
Well, I did, you know, I did circulate that report to the committee in advance. Okay?
You didn't solicit input, but they saw this before tonight?
Yes.
They saw this report?
Yes, they did.
Okay, that's better. I would have preferred they had input, but I'm glad that they saw-
Well, you know, there were a lot of mitigating factors, I think, as far as, I'd been out of the country, which isn't really important. But the point is, calendar-wise, you know, we attempted to do the best we could, so.
Thank you.
You know, it's a good criticism. In the future, I mean, with time permitting, I suppose, you know, we could, you know, certainly, you know, move in that direction.
Thank you.
Thank you, Clem. Great report.
Thank you.
Thank you. Consent Agenda.
Before we go anywhere-
I lost the agenda.
The second, the October 11th minutes?
Yes.
There's just two changes. They could be made, and we could vote them, because there's only two things.
Go ahead. Joe's listening.
On page six of the October 11th minutes, and it's just a stickler, because if you just saw this absent any context, you wouldn't know what the heck they were talking about. The first line says that it was purchased, the Marsline property was purchased in this fourth paragraph in July. It's actually in July of 2021, so that people can actually have a point of reference about what July that is. And the second one was on page seven of those same minutes.
Go ahead, Joe.
Can you just restate where that is?
Yeah, it's in the fourth paragraph, first line, what, Marsline property was purchased in July, but it was purchased in July of 2021. Just for the sake of clarity, because if you picked up the minutes, you wouldn't have a clue about which July it was. And the second one is another stickler kind of thing. Page seven, eighth paragraph down, second line, it talks about mixed-use housing. It really was that we can't do any projects with affordable end-market rate housing because of the source of the money. I'm not sure anybody would understand what mixed-use housing was, and it really wasn't discussed that way. Are you there?
I got it. I'm waiting for Joe to, his eyebrows to raise.
I see the reference. I don't understand what the-
Mixed-use housing has a whole bunch of different possible meanings. It was really, it really needed to be affordable and market-rate housing. Could not be built on that property based on the funding source of the purchase. Just replace mixed-use with affordable and market-rate.
Board's okay with that?
Yeah.
Yes.
Can I get a motion?
Okay.
Oh, Don?
Okay, I move that we vote to approve the Board of Selectmen meeting minutes for 10-3, 2022, and 10-11, 2022.
As amended.
As amended. And you want me to go on with the next one?
Yes.
And we vote to accept the resignation of Emily Milan from the Voter Information Committee effect of October 25, 2022, with our sincere gratitude for service.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
I guess we're trying to protest Emily leaving, so I wonder-
We can protest, but I don't think it's going to work.
We'll yell at you later.
I've known her for quite some time.
Very reluctant eye.
Eye, four-zero, Joe?
Could we really keep her?
Can I get a motion on New Business A, and I'd like them read separately. One is one motion, and two is the other.
I move that we vote to approve the following Pilgrim Sonic Lodge AF and AM request located on 706 Main Street. The first one is for hawkers and peddlers licensed to sell Christmas trees at 9 Sisson Road.
Okay. Moved in seconded. Any discussion on that one? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I know where you're heading. I move that we vote to approve the following, also for the Pilgrim Sonic Lodge AF and AM, 706 Main Street, a fee waiver for the license application fee of $60.
Second.
Okay, moved in seconded. I'll start with comments, as I do often. Fee waivers are at a cost to the town. I believe on this one, actually, last year, we voted not to give the fee waiver, but either way, fee waivers is a cost of doing this with licensing, and I'm against fee waivers pretty much across the board. Any other discussion?
Did we not waive it last year?
I don't, I think this was one of the ones the board did not, but I can't guarantee that, so. But it's a $60 fee. It's not an exorbitant fee, and there is a cost to doing this. Any other discussion?
I actually agree with that. I wish we, it's a tough discussion, because we, it's not significant for either them or us, but it keeps coming back. I tend to agree with you, Michael, on this.
Don?
I feel differently with charitable than I do with other organizations. I get that there's a cost to the town, but they don't charge the town for some of the things that they do for the town. I mean, 60 bucks, if I had to contribute a third of it myself, I would, but I still feel that it's worthwhile waiving the fee.
Just a third?
Because you're going to do the other two-thirds.
Mary, any comments?
Yeah, I can see not waiving them. I mean, the fees are not exorbitant. It is a cost. I don't know. I think I could go not waive.
Are you withdrawing your second?
No, she can second for discussion.
I can still second.
No, that's okay. We have to hold on.
All right. So we're going to go to, all in favor of waiving the fee?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm going to oppose it.
Nay, whatever you say.
Opposed. Three to one against, Joe. Conservation Restriction B is off until legal goes through that. 2023 Annual Town Meeting Proposed Draft Articles. Joe?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So a few points to bear out in this. First is, in an effort to just demonstrate the continual, continuous approach that staff takes to our annual town meeting, which, as I said earlier, is 189 days from today, I thought it might be helpful for the board to see, and the public for that matter, how the warrant tends to break out, and to also mention how we on staff are working on these. So in the memo that you have, you can see that any given year, there could be approximately 70 articles to come before an annual town meeting. To use the parlance that the patriots are used to, the over-under on articles is 70. The last couple of years, we've taken the under. But as you have referenced, Mr. Chairman, this might be the year that we either break even or take the over. So as you can see, the different types, the boilerplate articles, those are the first nine articles that we always see. Those are the salaries, the committee reports, the operating budgets, things of that nature. We contemplate, on average, approximately 15 capital articles, 15 CPC articles. I can tell you right now that we would expect no more than 14 CPC articles, because we know that now, based on the number of applications they have, and so on and so forth. So with that, I will tell you that as we work towards town meeting, staff and I can work with council presently to develop at least the framework for all the nine boilerplate articles. We see the standard language that's incorporated into CPC. Any of the governance articles that we're aware of right now, we can start to frame those out. The real, really the only thing that sort of impacts upon what the board does are the second-to-last, which is the petitioned articles. So I think it's well within the realm of possibility that if the board directed, we could have, we staff could have in front of the board in January, a fully-developed warrant, where you could at least create the numbering structure, and for a number of them, create the roll-call votes that you do. Then the petitioned articles, that by charter statute, those are the, works out to be the second Friday in February by noon, and that process has it going from the citizen petition to the board, excuse me, to the finance committee for them to work on. So all this being said means we can remain committed to a process of a full warrant book, which we saw at special town meeting, which would be the warrant number, the article itself, the explanations, both of town and finance committee, the roll-call votes, and the motions, and quite possibly could do that two weeks after the budget hearing that you have on March 4. In addition, I wanted to make the board aware that, as you can see, there are other topics that the board has made me and other staff aware of. For example, at your last meeting, Mr. Chairman, one of the members mentioned potential zoning bylaw amendments relative to the topic of density, and related to the accessory apartment units, or what is also known as the ADU units. And so I've already met with Amy Questle at KP Law to start framing that out, for those topics to come back to the board later this winter, and then go to the planning board, as is required under law. So this is really just to give a sort of a check-in as to where we're at. I believe we met as a staff today, and I want to say that there are at least 12 articles. You heard me mention some of the standard ones, such as cultural council and others. There's also the ones that we've been aware of throughout your discussions that would impact upon a forestry property, these bylaws that were mentioned by board members and others. And so we continue to proceed, and this is the update.
Excellent. Thank you. Mary, questions, comments?
I did like the meeting last week, or two weeks ago, whenever it was, that you had each article started at the top of the page. That made it so much easier to keep track of where we were.
Thank you, and thank you for the suggestion. We've gotten great feedback on that, and that's the endeavor. You know, Article 1 will have the preamble, as we call it.
Right.
But everything else should have its own page with all of that relevant information. There might be some articles that have an additional page, like we did for Article 2, but by and large, articles would enjoy their own page.
And if we could put, I think we did talk about this, before the CPC articles, which are always all together, a little paragraph that explains where CPC money comes from and where it can go, because some of the discussion that went on at length was because people didn't understand that.
If I could, council may have, there may be some issues with the placement of that, but that's not to say that we couldn't add it in the front or the end of the book. And it gives me an opportunity. We have municipal finance terms that have been hiding in plain sight there in the book. In fact, I updated it without any fanfare two and a half years ago, and no one noticed, so we might want to revisit that, where we have relevant terms such as CPC overview and things like that. So we can reimagine the first section of the book.
Okay, thanks.
Don?
No, nothing.
Larry?
Nothing.
Joe, just per our conversation the other day, I like the updated timeline. We have to do a lot more by way of education. And I think prior to town meeting, we have to have, Chamber does the four or five articles. I think we need to have a series of those for some of these more complex articles, to try and get some of the questions answered before we get to town meeting floor. So look forward to kind of a thought on how we can do that.
So I think we've been, we've seen that we're able to, knock on wood, reengage with the community, with the various community engagements that we have. And I think that's a system that works out well. The Fort Worth Housing Trust had a very successful one earlier in the month. We'll find out about traffic and safety tomorrow night. But I think that's a great opportunity where there's no formal structure, but rather, it's a Q and A session with the general public. So I think, and especially what we heard about our current state of the Voter Information Committee, it behooves us to get as many of those efforts and events going forward now.
Thank you, Joe. Cindy?
I didn't think I was going to get to talk tonight, but Cindy Williams, Executive Director of the Chamber. I know I had it been brought up by Mr. Waystack and Mr. Kakounis about the Chamber maybe doing a town meeting 101 kind of thing, and maybe I can get with the town administrator on that, because after last week, someone did bring it up to me again. So I think maybe doing a little twist on what we already do, but making it more of a forum where we can educate the public on things to be ready on bringing your motion, or just educational pieces, so it brings it a little easier for people to get involved in it, too. So we're more than welcome to do that, and I will get with the administrator on that.
Thank you. Anything further? Also, discussion on membership of the Harwich Accessibility Rights Committee. This was brought back from a previous conversation.
Yeah.
Larry?
Thank you, Michael. I ask this behalf to the agenda. As you read this document, we now have five members on the, on HARC, the Accessibility Rights Committee. It's varied from five to nine. It was dropped in the last couple of years from seven back to five, primarily because we are having trouble getting enough members. I think now we have members that are wishing to serve, and we could certainly use the help. And it's, the membership on this is our prerogative. We don't have to go to town meeting or anything, so I'd ask that we increase the members from five to seven.
Thank you, Larry. Don, questions?
Not a question, just a comment. It's neither in the charter nor in the bylaws that specify this as a foundational committee with any number associated with it. So we could do what we want.
Mary?
I'm fine if you've got the players and they want to contribute.
I think we do. At least we can attract them. So I move we-
Just one last thought. Could we make it a range? So if all of a sudden we don't have seven, we've only got six, we're not scrambling to get someone?
I don't think so. I think we-
It has to be a finite number.
I think we need a number on it. But as Don points out, we can change it again as well. But so I move we expand the committee from five to seven members.
Second.
Moved in second. And my only comment is, we struggled when we had seven. And now that we have five strong ones, rather, I would rather see us go to alternates, add two alternates to it. But, you know, the list that gets read every week now isn't even a complete list.
Right.
We've got some issues with some other committees, clearly, that we're working on.
I'd like to-
Just because we have extra people all of a sudden, we struggled with this committee. We didn't have meetings because of no forum right now.
Right.
If we add seven and don't fill those two, we need four of the five to show up at every meeting, and we're not going to have a meeting again.
We're in trouble. My response to that, we have a lot of enthusiasm for people wanting to get involved, so.
And then no, you know, alternates, not, you'd rather have full members? Alternates can do work.
They can. It's interesting, sometimes hard to get alternates and full members. I don't have a problem with that. We could try that and see where it goes, but-
Okay, Don?
I would, your reason I pressed is, it was a strong wish of the committee to expand it.
I can't go to the increase either, because it's not about, well, it's a good idea whether you can fill them. If you haven't filled them, the Chair's right. The bar is higher for your quorum until you fill them. I mean, do we really want to set up a circumstance where we're so enthusiastic, and then all of a sudden I can't hold meetings because there's three and not four?
And alternates can vote. This is not a-
It's an advisory committee.
It's an advisory committee, so alternates can vote in the absence of a full member, correct, Joe?
Generally speaking, yes. Given that it was reference made that it's, you know, there's not a foundational committee, it may be helpful to add that to the documents. But yeah, you could have a five and two, and like other committees do, they can indicate that they've been aware of everything and vote on something.
Let me ask you, we postpone this and go back to the committee and get their input on this.
Can I get the second withdrawn?
Yes, you can.
And the motion withdrawn?
Because I'm asking behalf of the committee. There's a strong position on this, and I don't want to diminish their enthusiasm.
Withdraw your motion, Larry?
I do.
Okay. And then Larry, you're going to go back to the committee and ask if alternates would work and just say, it seems like a split board at this point?
What's a quorum if you've got five- What's, what's a quorum if you've got five and two alternates?
Three.
So it's still, okay, so that, I, that does make sense.
Like it's a little easier work for our office staff, too, that's struggling with some of the committee organization. It's almost a full-time job for them. Okay, that's coming back. Joe, you going to put that on? Larry, you'll just request?
I'll get back to you when I have a discussion.
E, can I get a motion?
I move that we vote to approve the Veterans Day Ceremony proclamation.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion?
No, thank you, Don.
Yep, thank you, Don.
Mr. Howell does an outstanding job with proclamations. Thank you.
Thank you for saying that.
All in favor? Motion on F.
I move to approve the committee appointment recommendation by, by the interview committee of Pam North for the Harwich Cultural Council, full member expiring June 30, 2025.
Moved in seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Board of the Selectmen Discussion on Budget Message and Priorities. Budget message, we've really kind of been waiting, and Joe can dive into a little more, to get some of the revenue forecast in before we can really dive into an actual written message. Some of you have sent me things that are important to you, and some haven't. What is the priority of the board is kind of where I wanted to go tonight, so that we can start giving some direction to the town administrator on priority. But I really do need feedback from board members to get this budget, budget message written, unless you want me to just take a, take a shot at a draft. But priorities are really what we're looking for. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I think I've indicated this to you directly in the past. I'm back where I was a few years ago. I mean, I'd be willing to have you take a stab at it. I don't feel like we should plan on new staff. I don't plan on, I don't think we should plan on new initiatives. Right now, it's a really turbulent time economically. Can't see how we could even know what's going to happen two months from now. Nobody foresaw a year and a half ago that gasoline would go in the direction it went, so I would be extremely cautious about expanding anything beyond our immediate future.
Thank you, Don. Larry?
I agree with that.
I do as well. I don't see the need to change much from last year's budget message, to be honest.
Less even.
What's that?
Less even.
Do you want me to take a shot at a written version for you to vote on?
Yeah, that'd be great.
And are there any priorities? Because I know the next topic that we're about to talk about are goals and objectives and priorities, and I know at least two members of the board wrote that they wanted to talk about having a human resource director, an actual human resource position. So that would go against what we just said.
Yeah, I, I think that's a, a want, not a need at the moment.
Okay. Don?
It's right up there with me wanting a pool for the town. It's not something that we really need at the moment.
I, I differ. I feel like that could help us deload admin, deload Megan a little bit, and it gives some separation between administration and HR, which I think might give us some help with some overall morale issues. So that's why I threw it in there. I don't know who else thought it was a good idea.
It's a great idea. It's just 120 or 30,000.
But that doesn't mean we have to hire, but I think we should at least start talking about that. It appeared, I got the information, or I got the idea, actually, when I was talking to some other towns about another issue, which I don't remember what it is. Oh, it was about who interviews candidates when we were talking about whether we should see all the applicants. And several, not several, at least two, maybe three towns that I talked to had an HR person involved in that process, and I thought, that's just another person with a different, different set of experience looking at things, so.
I'm going to put this in as an accept, and then we'll vote on the budget message, because I think we'll need Julie to break a tie on this one. Did a fair amount of research. Several towns have HR directors, and I think to Mary's point, it separates administration from the employees, and, and I think that's something, depending on the cost, that I would support. We also talked tonight briefly about cemetery director and the cemetery commission's report looking for an assistant. Joe said, I think, he used the words priority, boards priorities when we talked about that. Where's the board at with that? I don't want to go backwards and write things to take them out.
Can we back up just a second? In whatever we do, I'm not saying it's not a good idea. As a matter of fact, I pitched it when I first came into office in year 2000, because it seemed odd that the, the person hearing personnel grievances was also the same person who you went to for a review of the, the decision. Having said that, though, I'd love, if we're going to have that conversation, we need to quantify it. What is it, it costs in other towns with full benefits? Because benefits in a government generally go from 25 to 40% above what the stated amount is. So if we're talking about $140,000, we should be saying, we're talking about roughly.
Do you want to weigh in at all, Joe, or are you just listening? You turned your chair.
Not at all. I'm in a listening mode right now. I would rather the board talk about it.
Okay.
I certainly have my opinions, preferences, and thoughts, but I'd rather keep them within for right now.
Perfect. 2% versus 2.5%. You know, prior to this administrator, we always talked about 2.5% plus a percentage of the growth. To Don's point, sooner or later, the growth has to stop, and especially in an economy like this, where we're talking about fuel and oil and, and lack of employees and water bans, so landscapers have laid people off, proposed fertilizer bans, there's a lot of things that are changing the dynamics of, of the Cape and, and the country. Where does the board want to be on the message, on the 2% versus 2.5% plus growth? Or, and then let me just add to it, the administrator talked last year about a level-funded budget when he, when he spoke to the department heads. All of these terms are interesting terms that, that level, level doesn't mean 2.2% or 2.5%. And for me, it makes more sense to be presented with a budget from the administrator on what the town's needs are. This exercise is part of the charter, so we should go through it without going through the first process first, which should be the administrator talking to the department heads and figuring out what the actual needs are. How does the board want to tackle that? I don't want to just make up words and then erase them.
Well, sorry, I don't think we have a.
Larry?
I don't think we have a, a choice. We, with the times we're living in, with the inflation going on, the cost of our expenses going up, we have to be careful of that. But I'm hearing a discussion on the hiring HR, for instance, and we have to be careful that we're consistent with that discussion. I mean, I would like that, but we can't do, we can't do all things. So it has to tie together. I, I bring it in as a, how we look at his organization, see where we go with it.
Don?
Once he gets going in a direction.
It's like a dog. Why don't you start circling?
There you go. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I think what you were driving at is a level activity budget, because if we kept it level funded, it's actually with contractual obligations, we're reducing the budget. It seems to me that one of the first things that's going to happen, and it isn't here, it's over there, is that if you could come up with any efficiencies first, that you could trade from one organization to another that gets you to some of these things that you want to have, then that's ideal, because, I mean, 30 years ago, we weren't talking about computers doing things. If we can excise certain number of person hours, you know, to do a particular function and then take the reduced cost of having that happen and apply it to hiring somebody else in another area where you need them, and just reprioritize them. I'd love to see what the town administrator has to say. I just want to say that the 2% is more appealing, because we don't know what's going on. And you get, there are other towns that are in really serious trouble right now, because they didn't do what we did pre, you know, going into COVID. They presumed that somebody was going to bail them out, and that didn't happen universally.
Mary?
I don't know. I like your idea of letting the departments come in with their full needs budget. You know that's not going to be the final, final say, we're going to have to cut, but, and let them, let them justify whatever their increases are, and, and we could sort that out. I kind of like that, rather than forcing them to make the math stay even. And back to my HR director, we managed to get two $75,000 positions in this year, so that's about 150. I don't know what an HR director makes, but maybe we could make it work.
Thank you. And Joe, I'm not trying to make it more confusing, and I'll put something in writing, and we'll, we'll discuss. You know, I think back to last year, there was one department head that we ended up quarreling at the end, or not quarreling, but adding back $1,250, I think it was, or $2,500 for some programs that have all gone very well. Rather than go through the exercise like we do negotiating, maybe union contracts where we're, where we're starting here and here, and then ultimately over a long period of time getting here, I'd like to recognize that making the budget process more difficult, just to make it more difficult, is a task we really shouldn't go through, too. And I would not want to see where everybody could come in with all of their wants and needs, and then have the administrator pare them down to reality.
Yeah.
So the statement from us has to start at reality, but understanding that we have some needs in areas of the town, and, and maybe some areas, and that's, I guess, where I'd be looking for direction. Maybe, maybe some areas where we don't have needs anymore, and to Don's point, where we could cut and add back to where the priorities are. Is there any individual priorities of any board members sitting here tonight? HR was one that was brought up by two. Is there any other priorities other than being very cautious with our budget this year? Any areas where you think, I mean, zoning is one, I know Julie's not here tonight, zoning changes is one, and looking at what we have for staff, you know, there might be a need for some increase to get that done. Is there anything else that anyone can pinpoint that there is a priority to them?
Off the top of my head, Michael, no.
Recognizing we do get fees from visits to the windows, in, to the, particularly buildings, you know, to pull permits, I don't know where this is going to end up, and I'm willing to give the new person some leeway to try to, you know, see what, how the ship gets righted, but we're still not at the point, because I'm here and still, I'm pretty sure you are, too, that there, there's still an unacceptable lead time for when you put in for a permit, and if they need another set of hands, and we can rationalize that through a fee structure, I'd be in favor of that.
Talking to the building department?
Building department particularly, yeah.
We did have a brief conversation about that today, and a lot of building permits were issued this week.
Terrific.
They have managed to get the department back up to full staff, so now we are, we are, we are running on a full staff, correct, Joe?
And specifically to that department, you're going to hear me announce, under TA report, another executive assistant, so the complement of two EAs in there will be filled as of November 7th. We obviously have Jack Mew, who's been online for a couple of weeks now, but already making great headway. We have our permitting software upgrade coming online, and in the building commissioner's budget for the last several years, there has been funding for another part-time building inspector. I've authorized Jack to go ahead and work with Megan to fill that, meaning that priority may already be fully built out, unless you wanted to add a brand-new person to that department, because that was already a priority in fiscal year '23 that we adopted.
That's an add, that's fine.
So once we vet a written budget message, by no means are we going to say, hire another person. I would expect you to come back and say, I've already filled that.
Yep.
Thank you. All right. Anything to add? Anyone? Take a stab at it. Goals and objectives and priorities, same sort of conversation. You all were presented with a spreadsheet and a draft letter tonight. There's not much different.
No.
So why don't we, I did take feedback from board members that sent it, and I think I captured everything. Julie sent me something tonight, which, there'll be some small edits to it, but I don't, I don't believe many. Larry, any comments based on what you have in front of you?
Yeah, I'm fine.
Don?
I'm fine with it, too.
Mary?
I think this is good.
Okay. So if I don't have to edit, we'll put it back on for a vote next week, or next meeting, so we don't have to vote it tonight. But I want to read what Julie sent tonight and incorporate it if it's not in there. Joe, any comments on what you're looking at, since most of it pertains to what you're going to do?
No, other than to say that I think the categories are succinct but also legitimate. These are the things that we work on, and, you know, there's sort of that miscellaneous with outstanding goals. Notwithstanding that, everything else you have there is exactly what the categories that we work on on a regular basis, so I think you've captured it, and I think you have very concise and clear descriptions within each of those categories. So I find it to be a useful and helpful document.
Joe, one, one, one outstanding goal that we've been working on last year that's an update to this year is the very top line, and it's to determine the board goals that have not been accomplished or, or complete goals. Can we work on that? I know you already have a document, it probably has to be updated, but procurement for me is one of them.
Sure.
Where we are with contracts, where we are with procurement, and then I'll bring that back in the next meeting, just as an update to the board members.
Sure, absolutely.
Several board members wanted an update on where we were.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Contracts, can I get motions on contracts?
Mr. Chair, I moved that we vote to approve a contract with Eastern Minerals Incorporated for an amount not to exceed $196,350 for the purpose of road salt.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five zero, four zero, not five.
Mr. Chair, I move that we vote to approve a contract with Bowditch Excavating Incorporated in the amount of $80,000 for bunker renovations at Cranbury Valley Golf Course.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four zero?
Mr. Chair, I move that we vote to approve winter boat storage license agreements with Allen Harbor Marine Service Incorporated and Harwich Port Boatyard Incorporated.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, just to thank the harbor master and say, John, if I were you, I'd log off now and turn on the game, or whatever else you want to do, but he's been there all night for us.
Thank you, John, and, yeah, I'm sure the game's on in the background, right?
No pets.
Anything you want to say, John, or?
Something that's not going to hold us up.
Like, give the score.
Yeah, no, I think you've gone long enough. Thanks very much. Both, you know, had three-year license agreements with us, and we've had no issues with them, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I move that we vote to approve a contract with Enterprise Equipment Company in the amount of $278,375 for boiler and hot water tank replacement at the community center.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion? Carolyn? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I move that we vote to sign a purchase and sales agreement for 203 Bank Street.
Second.
Moved in second.
I'm not going to say also known as.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, upon that, closing has been set for November 30th, 2022.
Great news. All in favor?
What was the date, Joe?
November 30th.
Oh, great.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four zero?
Do we need to do this next one? I thought the town administrator had the authority.
That was added to the last moment, I assume.
That's the only thing I can't do. IMAs have to be the board.
Oh, okay. Mr. Chair, I move that we vote to approve an intermunicipal agreement with the town of Harwich and the city of Quincy for the 1992 Emergency One aerial ladder in the amount of $15,000.
And just for the record, that is Quincy, Massachusetts, not Quincy, Illinois.
Like Springfield.
Or wherever it is.
Okay, moved in seconded. Chief, because you stayed this long, we give a very brief explanation of what this Chief, because you stayed this long, will you give a very brief explanation of what this is? Because I've been asked since it hit the agenda.
I don't want to get to the game.
Chief of Blank, Fire Department. The, just real briefly, we had entered into discussions with Quincy to trade a piece apparatus, an engine company, for a ladder. They are in desperate need of ladders that are under 11 feet tall, of which ours is. So they're buying a 30-year-old ladder truck. We weren't able to make the swap work, so we came up with a price, fair market price, based on a very difficult market to try and figure that out for. And they are, they're a good partner. They've offered Towne Harwich complete use of the training facilities in the future. They provided some air packs for the tech school, for the students doing the fire science. So it was a, it's a good fit. It's what Harwich does, we take care of people, so.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you very much.
Just to add for the record, this is not a disposition. This is not surplus. There is value, and it's going from one community to another, which is an appropriate way to do that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Four zero. And that was the last, so town administrator's report.
As I just alluded to a moment ago, I'm thrilled to announce the hiring of Rachel Lor. Rachel comes to us from another town on Cape Cod. She has a very strong municipal background, and that's great to know because she'll be going to the building department as the second executive assistant. Rachel has a great background, great personality. We're very excited to have her come on board, and if all goes well, she'll start November 7.
Great.
And that concludes my report.
Selectment's for it. Larry?
Nothing to add.
Don?
I hear we had a great town meeting.
Mary?
Nothing.
Motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Moved in seconded to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four zero.
Just one wasn't here, Capital Outlay, right?
Yeah.
Capital Outlay.
The Bears are up 10-0, start of the first, second quarter.
See, you're not missing anything.
What?
How's that possible? What'd he do, raid it?